I will call to order this joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Development Agency for this Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. And with that, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Rivers?
Here.
Councilmember Lemus?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Here.
Mayor Harvey?
Here. Thank you for that. And then would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to our public, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And we will move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes and notice of waiving a reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda item. It is an action item. Are there any questions or changes to the minutes for April 25th? Not seeing any. Okay. Then I will open this up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on the minutes for April 25th? I'm not seeing anyone run up to the podium. Kevin, would you like to check our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the minutes, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you so much. Then I will bring it back and be looking for a motion for the minutes of April 25th.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any no's? Any abstentions? Not seeing any, then that passes unanimously. And we will move on to the next item, which is announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the immediate agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposely biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, the maintenance of our streets, parks, and city buildings. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. Next, citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store or by texting your zip code, which is 94931, to 888-777. Last, like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or info@kattatcity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, and Nixle. So with that, we will move on to the next item, which is proclamations. And the first we have is proclamation of the city council of the City of Kattati declaring May 23rd as Bike to Work Month. I believe that we do have Eris here from the Bicycle Coalition. I will read this to you. It's a long one. Proclamation of the City Council of the City of Kattati declaring May 23rd as Bike to Work Month. Whereas the bicycle is a healthy, convenient, financially and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Sonoma County's scenic beauty, local attractions, and friendly neighborhoods. And whereas Sonoma County's roads and trails attract bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. And whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Sonoma County, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student health and learning, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas since 2001, the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition has been promoting bicycling for transportation and recreation through education, encouragement, and advocacy. And whereas thousands of Sonoma County schoolchildren have received classroom instruction in bicycle and pedestrian safety and participated in skill-building bike rodeos facilitated by the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition's Safe Routes to School program. And whereas the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition's Smart Cycling Program has taught bicycle safety skills to thousands of adults, including a diversion program for recipients of cycling-related traffic citations. And whereas the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition has produced numerous events and activities encouraging residents to ride a bicycle, including bike expos, cycle lovias, bike film nights, bike swap meets, community rides, giveaways of bicycles, and bicycle safety equipment, repair clinics, and Bike to Work Month. And whereas Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, the League of American Bicyclists, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and jurisdictions throughout the Bay Area will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2023. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Kattati and its visitors can experience the joys of bicycling through free education programs, challenges, and events organized by these groups. And whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this ninth day of May 2023 that the City Council of the City of Kattati does hereby recognize the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition and commends the institution for its contributions to the community. And now, therefore, be it further proclaimed that the Kattati City Council does hereby proclaim May 2023 as Bike to Work Month and May 18, 2023, as Bike to Work Day in Kattati, and urge all residents to participate in this otherwise special observance. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate how much Kattati has been involved with and supportive and engaged in Bike to Work Month throughout the years. In fact, my very first Bike to Work Month was staffing the station out here in La Plaza Park with Councilmember Ford quite a lot of years ago. I so love the compactness of Kattati, that we are truly a 15-minute city, that one can bike or walk to just about anything. But I still hear from people every day who would like to bike but are nervous about it. And so Bike Month is one of these activities that we use to try to help people give it a try. There will be an Energizer Station set up in La Plaza Park in the morning on the 18th. And I am working on putting together some slow, short, family-oriented rides to start and end here in Kattati, to just sort of help nurture folks who are just getting started. We had our first one a couple of weeks ago and had about five people showed up, but a good time was had by all. So again, thank you for this recognition and hope to see you all out on your bike on the 18th.
And Eris, would you like a picture?
Sure.
All right. I always take a photo. All right, smile. All right. And then we will move on to the next item, which is approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes this evening?
No proposed changes, Mayor.
No proposed changes, okay. And are there any comments of the public on this item, approval of the final agenda? Not seeing any here. Kevin, could you check with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment on approval of the final agenda, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. Then we will move on to our next item, which is citizens' business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021-01, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, I will open up citizens' business and comment on the consent calendar. Anyone wishing to speak citizens' business? Not seeing any. Would you like to check with our Zoom attendees?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment for citizens' business or the consent calendar, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone on the council wishing to pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
I don't wish to pull it, but I have a question about 9B for staff. Is that okay? So, just my question, probably for Craig. I noticed that the sewer plan called for us to replace the six-inch pipe with eight-inch pipe, but since we can't get under the creek in a timely manner, we're just going to go ahead and do six-inch pipe replacement. I just wanted to understand how that might affect things in the future. Like, will we plan to go replace it with eight-inch pipe someday, or is it sufficient for our needs into the foreseeable future?
Yeah, it would be replaced by an eight-inch in the future. And the work we're doing with this project would limit the disturbance of the newly paved road, just to that section, instead of going all the way up Cypress. It's a pretty big constraint to have the creek right there. And so it's just not feasible to get it in in this tight timeline that we have. So we're doing the best we can.
When would you imagine we'd want to go back and do the eight-inch pipe someday?
There are other priorities with fixing pipes, so we're going to get the most acute fixes right now. And so it could be five years down the road.
Okay, all right, thank you. I didn't want to pull it, I just wanted to understand. Sorry, I didn't catch that earlier to ask you before the meeting.
Okay, yes.
And I'm not sure if I need to pull or if I just have questions about E. So maybe we should pull it. Unless you want me to just ask the questions? I don't know which.
Yeah, I think if you want to have a conversation about, we probably just pull it.
Okay. So then, I'd like to please pull E.
Okay, all right. So then we have items A through D. And item B, I will be recusing myself from voting on that item because it is near me. So I would just assume I recuse myself from that. So if I could then get a motion on...
I'm sorry, why?
I am close to Cypress, which is where that item is, so therefore, I will be recusing myself, so.
I move to approve items A, C, and D.
All in favor? Oh, we need a second, sorry.
Do we have, oh, we have to do B separately?
Two motions.
Okay.
We don't have to, right?
You don't have to do it separately. You can vote on the entire consent calendar with the indication that you are recusing yourself on B.
Okay.
And we'll note that in the minutes.
Okay. Move to approve items A through D.
Second?
All right, so I will, let's do a roll call, though. This will probably be easier for this. Kevin, sorry.
Councilmember Rivers?
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes, for A, C, and D, and recuse myself for item B. So with that, we will move to item E. And could we get a staff report, then?
Yeah, would you like a staff report or do you have some questions about it?
Do you, would you want him to go through a staff report, or do you just have questions that you...
I think we could just ask.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, I just had three what I think are quick questions. One is, when I just compared the amount that we're offering, so first, just to make sure I understand, this is for young, not necessarily young, but new police officers that are going to the academy, and we want to bring them on and sponsor that education so that they are in line to come on to police staff. That part's correct, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so then, the one thing I just wanted to ask is, considering these are actually, you know, people in school and not actually working for the city yet, I'm wondering why there's like, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, like 12 different positions that are actually paid less than a student? And I wonder if it wouldn't be reasonable for the student, you know, for people who are working here to not be paid less than someone who is going to school to work here in the future?
So, the police officer bottom step is step A. And so Damian and I have looked at other cities and what they're doing. And this is normally what they do is because they're not a police officer yet and because they do not have the police academy yet, that they are not paid the full police officer wage? Is that the question?
Right, no, that's sort of the opposite of what I'm asking. It's like, so for example, the police dispatcher is less, an office assistant is less, an account clerk is less, like I'm just...
Sorry, I understand now, yeah. So, police officers make more than dispatchers. So every year, or not every year, but every time there's a new MOU, there's a comparison of cities similar to Kattati, and that's where the salary ranges come from. But at any police agencies, a police officer makes more than, for example, a police dispatcher. It's dangerous, there's more training. It's just a very different job, and that's why it pays more.
Okay.
And I will say too, when the chief and I were researching this to set this up, many other cities do this, and it's very, the common practice sort of across the board is it's about, your A step is your starting, your entry level police salary step.
Right.
So the common, the very common practice we saw across all the different agencies was that it was about 20% under the starting step is what they paid for the trainee in the academy.
Okay, so maybe we just need to raise what everyone else is paid. Okay. And then my second question was about representation. Is there a reason they're not going to be represented?
Yeah, I can explain that.
Okay.
So because they're not going to be working the streets yet, and they're, so they technically will not be police officers until they graduate the academy and then are sworn in, take the oath of office. So they don't need to be a union member at that time, and they don't have Peace Officer Bill of Rights as well. And so they won't be a member of the POA until they graduate the academy and start the field-trained officer program.
Okay. And then the last question, and I think I've asked something similar to this as well on other hiring and hiring of both external people and also internal to the city, is, you know, is, I don't see anything in the, you know, all the whereases to include something about, you know, Spanish-speaking or person of color, women, or LGBT, like, you know, diversity in hiring. And I just want to make sure that's in there somewhere, even if it's not in the proclamation that we make today.
Well, I mean, all the hiring has to be non-discriminatory. But there can't be, there's a very defined process for making preferences, hiring preferences. So I'm not sure if that's what you're asking.
It is.
Yeah, so that's a different process. You'd have to, you have to have a business need, basically, otherwise. You can't discriminate in your hiring.
Affirmative action is illegal, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Our city follows California laws and federal laws.
Yeah, you can't preferentially hire one person over another unless you have a business need for it. That's just the state of the law that we follow, to my understanding at least.
Okay, can I just check with the city attorney on that?
There's a California constitutional provision, the name of which I'm forgetting, that is really restrictive in terms of basing decisions on at least racial grounds. So I'm not comfortable saying affirmative action is illegal, but it's restricted, highly restricted. And there are various limitations on what types of decisions can be made. I think, though, we can, you know, advise that we welcome all different types of people and that kind of thing in the materials that we, when we solicit, you know, people to work in Kattati. So that's the kind of thing you can indicate, but you cannot make decisions based on people's backgrounds.
And I should have said that. That is absolutely, I mean, we certainly can do that in our advertisement in terms of what the advertisement says, but also, you know, where we seek employees, right? We're open to wherever someone comes from. And we are in the process, this came out of the ad hoc, we're in the process of reviewing job classes, and the police officer is one of them that we're reviewing for hiring preference or desirability based on at least Spanish-speaking, because that's a targeted...
I had that on the list, yeah.
Yeah, that's something that, you know, if provided the evaluation confirms this, then it's a, there's a business need for it, so there's a legitimate need to actually preferentially hire for that.
Okay, great. No, I just thought, you know, that we always hear about the pipeline, oh, we just don't have them in the pipeline, and this is exactly creating a pipeline, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, just from being in HR in the past, you're right with affirmative action, but there are kind of focus where you can kind of focus and do ideal characteristics of a candidate you're looking for, where you can put with ideal characteristics, maybe bilingual, Spanish, you know, that doesn't mean it's required to apply for the position, but you can add that to the job description. Let me see what else I was going to say. And also, I think a big, just some information to provide is outreach, is where you're outreach, is try to, I'm not sure where you're outreach to, to try to find these candidates, but I think it also would be good to kind of target maybe some schools. I have some, some groups, like, you know, there's like police officer, like Latino and Black and other kind of people of color groups that are law enforcement related, that you can kind of target some of those schools or some of those groups, just to kind of get more diversity in the pool, the candidate pool.
I had a question since we pulled it. Is there any provision to ensure that the candidate who goes through the trainee job for whatever period of time, do they then have to take a job with Kattati PD, or could they go off somewhere else at the end of all of this investment?
I don't know of any legal binding contract that says we have to keep them. I mean, police officers do lateral after some time sometimes, but immediately, I don't really see that as a trend. Is it possible? Yes, it's possible.
I was just reading in the report, it said that there's very few uncommitted candidates in the academy, so I'm worried that we could invest money in a candidate and then they get sniped by another department.
But our person would be committed, though.
They would be, they would be committed to us, that's what I was asking.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, they would definitely be committed to us, and if they graduate, they would get sworn in as a Kattati police officer and go through our program. Yeah, absolutely.
There'd be some contractual obligation on their part that they have to do that?
Well, now you're back to that. That's the question I thought you asked, and no, there's not.
So, yeah.
Not once, not once, once they become a Kattati police officer, if they wanted to apply elsewhere, they could.
But they have to, I feel like you're saying both things, yes, they have to, and no, they don't have to, or...
Yeah, I mean, we would, so like, the arrangement would be that, you know, they'd go through the academy, they'd be a sponsored, you know, a sponsored trainee. And this is, as I understand it...
But they would have to, I feel like you're saying both things. Yes, they have to, and no, they don't have to, or...
Yeah, there, I mean, there, we would, so like, the arrangement would be that, you know, they'd go through the academy, they'd be a sponsored, you know, a sponsored trainee. And, I, this is, this, as I understand it, this has been the subject of court cases in the past, where courts have essentially said that it's like indentured servitude to basically say that you have to work for that agency when you get out. But, so, it would be very, probably not great, a great, great for them to be jumping ship immediately, it wouldn't, I mean, it's a small community. And so, I think it's unlikely that they would just, you know, like, for example, get trained by us and go to Heelsburg, because they'd make a lot of people mad, and everyone would know in the small community. You know, so, it's just-
Peer, peer pressure, okay.
Yeah, it's just, yeah. It's possible, but not probable.
It doesn't really happen, is what you're saying?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I, I thought that there were some instances where they would have to stay for like, six months, or have to reimburse the city for the costs of school?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I thought that that's how some cities handled it. So, was a period of time where you, or you got reimbursed?
Maybe that's recruitment bonus, maybe? Maybe that's a recruitment bonus, because I know that there's recruitment bonuses that are offered in other agencies.
Yeah, that's-
I, I know with teaching, they have that, where you, they sponsor you, and then you have to work for four years in a Title I school before you can go out, or you have to pay back, pay it back. So, I know there is precedent for it, just maybe not in city, but I've seen teachers in that. And it is indentured servitude, but, you know, fundamentally, that is exactly what it is.
Yeah. So, this, I mean, this program, we're just starting it out for the first time, we've never done this before. So, we're gonna just see how it goes, and if we need to adjust things along the way, we certainly will, you know, if we find there's issues with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just one comment, that in teaching, those, those agreements are typically forgivable loans. So, they're structured as loans, which you, so you can either leave your job and pay the loans back, or stay in your job long enough to get the loans forgiven.
Makes, makes a lot of sense, yeah.
But, but the end result is the same, yeah.
When, when I took my sabbatical at the junior college, I had to sign paperwork that I would agree to pay back my entire salary for that year if I didn't work a certain number of years afterwards. So, I know that those types of agreements exist, because I was subject to one of them.
But I think the, the issue is somewhat, but Sylvia brought up, and that's that a lot of the other agencies are putting out large sign-on bonuses. So, this is just a way of, of helping get candidates and get good candidates at the academy. So, since we pulled this item, any more comment on this? Then I will open this up for public comments, since we pulled it. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone raise their hand. Would you check with Zoom attendees?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you. Bring it back. Then I would be looking for a motion on the addition of the police trainee job classification and related compensation item.
I'll make a motion to approve the item?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Andy knows, Andy abstains. All right, that motion passes unanimously. And then we will move on to item 10, which is direction on future agenda items. Uh-uh, the hot seat got moved.
Yes, Sylvia?
Yes, with June coming up, I want to request a proclamation for Pride Month. And so, I don't know if this is the time to request it.
Got it? Okay.
I don't know if Kattati has done this in the past as well, but how about getting the progressive gay flag out front as well? Is that something we've done before?
We have not, no.
I would like to, I don't know how one goes about proposing making that happen, but I would like to see that happen.
Sure, it would all be part of the same process. In fact, I think Councilmember Lemos asked earlier for a conversation about sort of our, our proclamations through the year. And it may, it may lag it a little bit, but that would be a more comprehensive conversation, because usually when you're doing proclamations, oftentimes, they come with flags of some type too, so there's a, it's a related conversation. It's not, it's not uncommon.
Okay, alrighty. Then with that, we will move on to our regular agenda item. And the first item is appointment of library commissioner. And I believe that Cyan is in the audience. Would you like to come up to the podium? Cyan?
I could.
You could.
I don't know. I don't know if Cyan-
Oh, you don't have to say anything, just want to introduce you to the folks, if you could come up. Cyan McMillan has applied for, to be our representative on the library commission. And he is looking to have a career in the library field. So, I think that it's wonderful that he's applied and wanted to be our commissioner, and I think it'll be a good experience for him to have this, this under his belt. So, anything that you would like to add?
I'm just happy to be here.
Okay, okay. Does anyone have any questions for Cyan? Sure. Not hard questions.
No, and it's actually not, can I make a comment as low as can have to be a question?
Sure.
Okay. So, I just want to welcome you, I'm, as soon as you get appointed, but I'm, I'm very excited to see your application. I'm on the library advisory board, and also the Rona Park Kattati Library and Education Committee. And I see you went to Credo, which I have some very, I know a lot of people there. I'm a high school teacher. So, anyway, I just am delighted that you applied, and I'm really looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then, we will take, you, you may sit down if you'd like. And I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this nomination to the library commission in the audience? Not seeing anyone run up. Could you check on Zoom then, Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you so much. Then I would be looking for a motion to approve my nomination.
I nominate to approve the nomination of, sorry, what am I saying? I move that we appoint Cyan as library commissioner.
Second.
I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Andy knows, Andy abstentions? Not hearing any. Well, welcome Cyan, and thank you for being our new library commissioner. And please let us know if you need anything from us. But we appreciate your service. All right, then, with that, we will move on to the next item, which is the NorCal Oaks baseball and softball license agreement for use of the city recreation facilities. And I think Ashley's gonna take this one.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Just a little bit of background, the city owns, operates, and maintains Caterfield behind City Hall here, and the baseball field at Putnam Park, which include baseball fields, fencing, backstops, dugouts, bleachers, parking lots, restrooms, and a snack shack. In February 2017, Cal Ripken Babe Ruth Baseball entered into a five-year license agreement for the field use, which required maintenance of the fields, but did not propose or require improvements. At the end of their agreement term, which was this year, they had, they chose not to request to renew their license. So, it's currently sitting empty. NorCal Oaks is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that provides free youth baseball and softball throughout Sonoma County to its participants. And after the agreement with Cal Ripken ended, they came in to speak with me about proposing to use our facilities as their home base. Looking for home fields, they believe it would be a perfect location to target throughout, everyone throughout Sonoma County, being the hub and all. And they would like a space to consistently hold their practices and games, rather than needing to travel out of the area to play, because they currently don't have a home, any home fields. Under the proposed agreement, they would be utilized, the fields would be utilized by youth ages 10 to 15, and are expected to be primarily from Sonoma County, although they would not restrict that as a requirement for them to play. The proposed agreement is a 10-year agreement with the option for extension if requested by either party, and would be beneficial to the city, as the fields would be put to use for youth recreational sport, and reduce city maintenance costs of the baseball portions of Caterfield and Civic Center Park, at Civic Center Park and Putnam Park. There's a, currently about 75 players with the NorCal Oaks, and they expect that, once they are able to get to, get a home field, that they'll raise that number to 140 by the end of August, with word being spread that there's a free baseball program and softball program throughout the county, and gain, they just gained popularity. They've also proposed to make significant changes to both fields, which would include new saw, dirt, fencing, sand, bleachers, and much more. Other potential benefits to the city would include increased visitation with potential sales tax revenue, families visiting for their weekend tournaments or practices, and return guests maybe finding a park and then wanting to have a birthday party there. And the staff, in conjunction, in conjunction with the NorCal Oaks, have developed a draft license agreement, which is attached to the agenda, or to the packet, which would include the NorCal Oaks paying for, paying for utilities for both fields, including the snack shack and maintenance of the field, with the city maintaining the irrigation system and parking areas. The financial considerations is that they are proposing to, to make field, field improvements in this first year of $577,000, $577,588 within the first year. And additionally, they would be proposing to spend $5,000 annually to the cit, or pay $5,000 annually to the city for the, each of the 10 years in the agreement. With the Cal Ripken baseball, we collected $1 a year, just as comparison. And they did not make that amount of improvements. We expect that the anticipation, anticipated impact of the budget would be positive, and they are willing to partner with us in facility maintenance and, and, and utilities. And they've also offered to partner with us to offer other recreation programs or camps, if it's something that we have desired. And I do have John Titus here, representing the NorCal Oaks, if there's questions directly to him, or to the, to the organization about how they operate. But with that, I will take any questions.
I had a question. My question was, there's about 70 youth that are already in the group. Are they Sonoma County? Because I noticed that Mr. Titus and Hillary Sanders are from Santa Fel. Are they Sonoma County? I know it doesn't matter. And then, in outreach recruitment, will there be outreach into kids in other areas? Is it like for underserved youth, or I just have questions?
All are welcome. So, if that's something that you wanted to propose, then we can potentially add that. But, right now, it's open to anybody, and primarily, all, all current, all current participants are Sonoma County-based.
Okay.
They're just not restricting it, so you can come. If you're willing to drive from Santa Fel for practice, whenever your practice is in, for games, then you're welcome, as long as they have enough coaches in room.
Okay. A bit selfishly, is it only for youth, or do they have adult programming as well?
Currently, just youth.
Okay. Mr. Titus, would you like to share anything?
I'm sure, because I mean, I'm from Rona Park, so-
Okay.
Hillary is actually just our lawyer that works at Santa Fel. Or, she's actually in Seattle. Our law firm is actually in Santa Fel. So, just to kind of give you guys a background of the, the NorCal Oaks, we have a very generous fundraiser that has sponsored us. He started out, last year was our first year. His, because his son was playing baseball at a kind of a pay-to-play type thing, where they were paying a couple hundred bucks a week, about $1,000 a month for them to go play at a baseball, we call them factories up in Santa Rosa. His son wasn't getting much playing time, there were a bunch of kids on the team, the coaches were bait and switch coaches, so they hired, you know, they promote a semi-pro baseball player, or an old pro as your coach, and then, next thing you know, a dad comes in and is coaching the kids, and they're not getting the coaching that they need. So, his wife actually told him, "Don't complain, do something about it." So, he went up and basically started, last year, we had our first year of kids that were just 12 U kids. My son was one of them at 11 U. He brought him from Windsor to Petaluma, Santa Rosa, Rona Park, and we, he actually sent us all to Cooperstown for a Cooperstown tournament. We went to Cooperstown Dream Park last summer, which is a $30,000 fee just to get into the tournament. He sponsored the whole thing, and ended up paying for the hotels, the flights for all the parents to get the kids out there. There was 88 teams in the tournament that we were in for that weekend, we ended up finishing eighth. And when we got back, that brought more attention for kids, like, oh wow, this is actually pretty good. His philosophy is no dad coaches, so if you have a son, you can't coach him. All our coaches are paid, so we bring in coaches. We have the head coach from Windsor, David Villa, who played semi-ball. We have Paul Mayo from Casa Grande, another famous coach from the area. We have Spencer Torkelson, I don't know if anybody knows who he is. We have his uncle that helps out. And so, we started, basically, our, our foundation is, we go out and get the coaches first, to make sure they're good coaches, have the right values, and then we bring in the kids to match them. And so, we started a girls softball, 12 to 14 U, at the same time. When we got back, there were some girls that were interested, they didn't want to play baseball, they wanted to play softball, didn't have a, an outlet, or it was very expensive. A lot of the travel, baseball is very expensive. You go for the weekend, it's a $2,000 weekend. And his thought was, every kid should be able to play regardless of how much they make. So, he started a softball program, and we're actually meeting next Monday to actually add three more teams, a 10 U, a 12 U, and a 16 U girls softball, to make it four teams, which is what we would use this field here for. Would be a dirt infield, so that we could use it for softball, and also baseball for the 10 and 11 and 12 U guys. And then, we actually now have three teams in the 13 U, which we would use the big field. We moved into Sonoma State when we came back. We actually redid their field, and we're using their equipment, their batting cages, stuff like that. But during baseball season, they take priority. So, again, the kids kind of got shoved off to the side, and so now, we're actually looking to buy a building as well, to do an indoor facility for the boys during the winter time. And then, as things go on, if we get these fields here, we're also hoping maybe we can even turf them, so that the, the people can use them, you know, all year round, and, and kind of go from there. So, it's been a, a great organization. He has a lot of wealthy friends and sponsors that come in there. The fields, the, all the money that we're planning on spending is already fully funded. We have it in the bank account. We just want some, we want to get the kids someplace to play, and have them enjoy baseball until they get, you know, the whole thing for the boys is, you know, this is their fun time. When they get to high school, baseball changes. And so, we want them to enjoy it, we want them to get good coaching, not just go out there with the dads and hit the balls, and not be ready for when they get into high school, and be able to compete for their things, but also, you know, to learn baseball, love the game, and then want to play in high school. So, that's kind of where we're, we're going with this. And we're just looking for a town, a city that we can set our feet in, have our home fields, have the kids have some pride in where they live and play, play in front of their friends, rather than travel to Manteca, or Martinez, or Fairfield, and all these places to go and stay somebody else. We'd rather play home, in front of our family and friends, so that the kids can do it, enjoy it. And I think by not having the fees or anything like that, we can attract more people that, you know, typically would not be playing baseball, to play baseball.
Yes, okay. Just quick gender question.
Yes.
If you said, you know, the girls wanted to play softball, if a girl wanted to play baseball, or a boy wanted to play softball-
We actually have one. We actually have one girl that, her name's Macy. She's a 12 year old, and she's playing, she wants to play baseball.
Okay, great.
She's actually really good.
All right. And then, anyone in between?
Anyone in between, yeah. It's whoever, it's just typically, it's, you know, we accept anybody, regardless of their playing ability. You know, we have some kids that didn't understand which hand to put the glove on, two guys that were really, really good. We do, we call tryouts, but everybody makes a team. What we do for tryouts is to make sure that the kids are put together- What we do for tryouts is to make sure that the kids are put together with their adequate skill levels so that kids don't get hurt or one team ends up with six pitchers and the other team ends up with six catchers. We kind of try to do that for tryouts. So we call them tryouts, but we have never, you know, we don't plan on cutting any kids. And as far as the numbers, you know, this year, as time goes on, we've been getting probably about two or three emails or phone calls a day with people trying to add, add kids to the program. When are we having tryouts? When are we starting? So we're actually probably going to have a lot, a lot more teams than we anticipated upfront. So we're going to have to try to expand that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you because I think this is really good for youth and our kids to have exposure to sports and arts and different things. It helps their future. So thank you very much for your group and what you're doing.
Yeah, no, thank you. We believe the same.
Likewise, thanks for partnering with the city. I'm excited to have the programs here. I just want to, you mentioned possibly turfing, by which I assume you mean artificial turfing the, the fields, which doesn't seem to be contemplated in the draft agreement.
It's not in there because there's a lot more involved with testing and stuff like that to get the turf put in. So what we believed is we partnered, again, one of his contacts is the Oakland A's. So the head groundskeeper is the one that's actually going to be redoing, sorry, redoing all the fields for us. So he's going to become putting in dirt and, and sod, the sod, same sod that's in dirt that's down at the Oakland Coliseum, it's going to be up here. And so it's just eventually, it's depending on weather, water needs, if we need to, we're prepared to also look at, you know, we're not opposed to turfing the fields if that's the city and we come to an agreement like, hey, you know, let's cut water, let's get rid of the grass, let's, we want to go turf, then we're 100% behind that. But there's no immediate plans.
Okay.
But the funding is there if we need to.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Thank you so much. This is a wonderful, wonderful thing and I'm, I'm really happy that you're here. I just had a question about what are you planning to do with the Helen Putnam Field, the Caterfields back here?
So I have a quick picture I could show you. I don't have Caterfields. We just did a kind of a real quick drawing to try to get pricing and fences.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean for the, for the improvements, but just in terms of use of the field, like what?
Oh, so, so it's the two, so the two different fields are two separate sizes. So this field over here, basically, my son played on it when he played single A for Cal Ripken. Actually, it would be what they call a 50-70 field. So it's 10, 11, and 12-year-olds with 70-foot bases, a 50-foot pitching mound. And what we would do here is it would be an all dirt infield without a pitching mound with the grass outfield to allow softball to be used. And then we would bring in a portable pitching mound. And then at Putnam is where the big improvements and a lot of stuff come into play because that's what they consider 60-90. So it's kind of like a college or high school baseball field, 90-foot bases, 60-foot pitcher mound. It would have grass infield, grass outfield with dirt paths going around it. There it would be, you know, we'd also have to put up a safety net to help protect the playground that's there. And then over here too, one of the things that I, I don't know if it's an agreement or not, but one of the things that we were going to do here is also put in a dog park to help keep the dogs off the fields because again, that's one of the big causes with kids playing, they dive and end up in stuff that wasn't supposed to be on the field. So we're looking at actually putting in, I know that you guys were planning on doing one or moving the one over at Putnam, but there was no immediate plans here. So that's part of the agreement as well is to throw in a dog park out there in the outfield if that works as well.
Great.
Again, we are very, we are very fortunate to have a very, very wealthy donor to help us do this that has the heart where it's, where it wants to be and, you know, he doesn't want to be recognized or anything out of this. It's, it's all for the kids, so it's just great to, you know, finally find a city that actually wants us to do it. It's, it's been a challenge. We've looked at Roanoke Park, we've looked at Santa Rosa where we started and no one really wanted to invest the time or the effort into moving fields or taking them over. So this is a, definitely a welcome piece. He wanted to stay in Sonoma County. He didn't want to leave. He wanted to be in this hub here and kind of since we do, you know, mostly focus here. Like I said earlier, you know, if you roll into drive, we have kids, you know, we do, since we're at Sonoma State, we do a, every once in a while, we'll send out an email to everybody that we know, like, hey, our coaches are going to be at the batting cages at Sonoma State. If you have friends or anybody wants to come hit, show up. And there's been kids driving from Napa, American Canyon to come out and just, you know, play around with us out there. I don't see them driving up every day for practice or for games or anything like that, but it's good to see that, you know, at least you have the, the piece coming out there. And then again, you know, we're looking to actually buy a warehouse, hopefully in, you know, Roanoke Park or Catati, you know, about 7,000 square feet warehouse where we can actually have indoor batting cages for the boys all year round.
Maybe staff can help with that.
Kids, kids. It's all for the kids, yes.
All right. Well, thank you. It's really wonderful that, that you want to put your efforts here and it's really wonderful that the donor that you have is, you know, their heart is in the right spot to make sure that the kids have fun. I, I went through all my kids in baseball and I know exactly what you were talking about and I see it now with my grandsons playing baseball and, and it is real different when, when it's the parents trying to do it and, and.
It's hard and the kids, you know, it's a challenge for the kids. They don't, you know, sometimes you turn them off depending on the parents and, you know, some people don't, as co, as dads, they don't know how to coach and sometimes they can turn the kids off from playing baseball depending on how they act.
Yeah. And sometimes the coaches are even the hardest on their own kids.
Yes.
And then they really get turned off.
I'm guilty, I'm guilty of that. You know, when I was coaching my own son, I, you know, if anybody had a sit, it was my son. I didn't want anybody to look at me differently, but, you know, in this organization, all the coaches are paid and they can't have kids on the team that they're coaching, so.
No, that's great. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And nobody has any more questions? I will open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Not seeing anybody run up. So Kevin?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay. Then I would be looking for a motion for this wonderful thing.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Motion authorized the city manager to execute the license agreement between the City of Catati and the Norcal Oaks for use of Caterfield and Putnam Park baseball fields.
Second. I have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, it looks like we have a deal and thank you for spending your time in Catati. We appreciate it. Uh-oh, we have musical chairs going on over there. All righty. So the next item we have is consideration of resolution adopting the Sonoma County Vision Zero Action Plan. Ah, this must be JP, he's getting all prepared.
Thank you, Mayor Harvey, members of the council. My name's JP Harries and I'm a senior planner with the City of Catati. And tonight we are talking about adopting the Sonoma County Vision Zero Action Plan. And I'll add right away that Chris Barney with the Sonoma County Transit Authority, excuse me, Transportation Authority is here, as well as Laurel Chambers with the Department of Health Services also on Zoom and thank them for their time to be here tonight. So what is Vision Zero? Vision Zero is a strategy to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, equitable mobility for all. It was first implemented in Sweden in the 1990s and proved to be successful there. And then it is now gaining momentum throughout the country, mostly in larger cities. And I believe we might be the first county to actually do a countywide Vision Zero, but if I'm wrong on that, Laurel or Chris can correct me. What it is, is really it's a new vision for safety. So if traditionally we looked at traffic deaths as inevitable and this takes the position that traffic deaths are preventable. Also, normally we would spread our dollars, basically based on geographic, put some money there, put some money over here. This one says, look for where there's been malinvestment or underinvestment and, and address those type of funding. Traditionally, we expect perfect human behavior. This one realized, this approach realizes there is human error and we need more of a systems approach and that includes design and other methods to, to address the fact that humans do make mistakes. Traditionally, we would prevent collisions. In this case, we're focused on preventing fatal and severe injury crashes. So yes, we understand there'll be crashes, but hopefully you go to the body shop instead of the hospital and that's the idea. Or if it's a vehicle against a pedestrian, we're identifying areas where we can slow the vehicles down, reduce those moments of conflict, or just make the pedestrian and bicycle more visible or give them a safer place to be. And then individual responsibility enhanced through traffic stops was the old way, which has led to, in some cases, kind of inequitable application of the law. And this is more of a collective responsibility. So that involves, well, really, everybody becomes partnerships in, in addressing traffic So just for some background, this effort was funded by Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant, Sonoma County Transportation Authority, and the Department of Health Services were the lead. And then they put together a multidisciplinary advisory committee, probably about 30 some people involved, and they included all the jurisdictions, including several departments of the Sonoma, of Sonoma County, California Highway Patrol, Caltrans, MTC, which is Metropolitan Transportation Committee Commission, the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, GHD, which is a engineering firm, the Sonoma County Transportation and Land Use Coalition, Diliacs, St. Joseph Health, and Providence Hospital were some of the main people in the advisory One of the first efforts was developing a data dashboard, which is, in order to address these problems, to find out where, what are the problems and where are the problems and how severe are they? And the data dashboard, and which anybody can go to, you can look and see where accidents have occurred, the severity of the accidents, was it vehicle against vehicle, vehicle against pedestrian or bicycle? And through that, we also were able to identify high injury intersections and what we call high injury networks, which are sections of roadway which are, tend to be prone to accidents There was a substantial engagement process through this effort. There was, starting with the Vision Zero Advisory Committee. There were two big community surveys in summer, fall of 2020, almost 1,000 responses. In October of 2021, we got almost 2,500 responses and almost 300 of them completed in Spanish. There were three focus groups. One was a mobility focus group. And then there were two other Spanish focus groups, one focused in Santa Rosa and the other in Sonoma Valley. There were also a bunch of interviews held with stakeholders and I will show you the list in a little bit. And there was a virtual, and this was during the COVID period, a virtual countywide public workshop. And then there were also presentations at transportation-related public boards. So out of the community survey, we were able to find, you know, ask people, what are the most important traffic safety issues facing Sonoma County today? And you could see the top three that people identified, speeding, distracted driving, poorly maintained roads. Interestingly, what we found is sometimes perception is not always matched up with reality. So, because for example, it's actually drinking, driving, and drinking and driving is, can be a major factor, which doesn't come out at the top there. And then we also asked, what do you think's the most important things that we can do to make things safer? And overwhelmingly, it was more enhanced safety features like protected bike lanes and streets designed to slow traffic. Other one, another portion, large portion wanted more enforcement and harsher penalties for speeding, DUI and other infractions. And then a much lower number wanted more education and outreach. And then here's a list of stakeholder interviews. The list is long, I'm not going to go through it, but it is, it is included in the Vision Zero Action Plan. And then at the virtual workshop on January 25th, 2022, there were over 40 attendees and they identified the most in traffic, the most important traffic safety issues to be distracted driving, speeding, and again, lack of protected bike lanes, and identified mitigation strategies such as narrow roadways, traffic calming, and lower speed limits. And then through this was the, the action plan was developed and it identified six main goals. And within each of these goals, there's a series of actions. And the first one is to create safe speeds, eliminate impaired driving, create a culture of safety, build safe streets for all, make vehicles safer and reduce private vehicle use, this is through VMT reduction, and improve data for effective decision-making. And that, that kind of thing is kind of, what that means improved data would be like, when there's a collision, improving the way that the police would like maybe collect information on what was the cause of that collision, where the collision was, where, if it was impaired driving, where was that person last to understand, you know, what's the source of the problem? Also, it means collecting kind of hospital data about injuries. So briefly, an analysis of this, this is a regional strategy. This is already a plan. We're not here tonight to, you know, talk about changing elements of the plan. It is a formed plan. But what we can do with it is certainly we can use it to inform future city efforts. And that is coming up, our bike and pedestrian master plan and any kind of general plan or specific plan updates we do, as well as incorporating these action items into our capital improvement projects as we move forward. And, and it currently, it complements what we are doing and that's, for example, we just adopted the local roadway safety plan. We have ongoing roadway bicycle and pedestrian improvements that we're constantly doing. Police activities such as targeting speed enforcement at problem areas, the ABC that's training for alcohol servers and collision reporting. And it increases our eligibility and competitiveness for regional, state, and federal grants. Examples of these are the Highway Safety Improvement Program, Safe Streets For All, which is a new plan that just came out of the 2022 bipartisan infrastructure law. And it sets aside, I think, $5 billion for these type of things. And it, your eligibility and competitiveness, and when you have identified plans and you can show that you're addressing areas that you've identified as important, it just makes you more competitive for those dollars. Also, we have within the City of Catati priority development areas. One is down, Gravestine Corridor, the other is Santerana Way in the downtown. And we're, by having a PDA, we're eligible for planning and technical assistance grants. I think you're going to see a large one coming your way to help us with planning of the Santerana Way. And then tied to the PDAs, it makes us eligible for One Bay Area Grants, OAB Grants. And the PDA does require us to have some sort of measure-like Vision Zero adopted. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution adopting the Sonoma County Vision Zero Action Plan. And with that, I'm available for questions and open to comments.
I'm just wondering if, if you can give some hypothetical scenarios where adopting this plan. plan would commit us to do something specific? Is there some future projects where this would inform what that project looks like, or things like that?
Yeah, so, I don't want to speak off cuff, I want to give you a real example. But sure, for example, if we're doing a full reclamation of a road, you know, replacing it, is there an opportunity to put in a bike trail? And, for example, if we're going to see something like that with Myrtle Avenue, you know, which is going to get a full depth reclamation. And at that time, we can use that to identify where we can do and put in improvement, something like that. When we're putting together our community plans, we can identify areas where we can target areas for enhanced pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Part of what also, that the police participate in this ABC training, so the idea, part of that is to increase the number of AIC servers that go through this ABC training, and I believe we require all of cities to participate in that kind of program.
Great.
Okay.
That's for me, thanks.
Sure.
Anyone this way? No? Yes?
Yeah, I was just wondering, our general plan and also the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan mention our safe routes to school plans. I don't know if that responsibility lies with the schools, since we have Thomas Page here with the school district, or is the city involved in that? And what's the status of that?
I'm sorry, I really don't know. I don't know if Cattati takes an active role in the Safe Routes to School program, and I don't know, Damian, if you know.
Well, I mean, the city has a longstanding project to try to improve the bicycle and pedestrian connectivity of Thomas Page to central Cattati.
That's why we did the work we did on Richardson Lane to help with that.
Richardson was a capital project as an example of that. So, I mean, that's been the involvement more recently, at least, is trying to tie up, tie capital projects.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether that, it was mentioned in the, in the report, but I wasn't sure in our city where that responsibility, whether it was with the school district or whether the city had involved in it. But it was mentioned, like I said, in our general plan and the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. So I didn't know, you know, what the status and if we were involved in that.
Yeah, I think schools are also directly involved in these funding sources for like, you know, bicycle safety training and that kind of thing. But, but for us, our, our role has primarily been exploring literally the safe route to the school, so. And that's usually where I see cities or counties involved, is, you know, if there's gaps in sidewalks or bike paths, that the cities would help pursue those.
Okay, and one other comment I was going to make too is that the report mentioned that 8% of all trips are on foot or bicycle, but it accounts for 90% of traffic deaths, you know, so that's kind of a pretty high number, you know? So I just want to make sure that, at least, even though we don't have the Bike and Pedestrian Plan, that we're still looking at all of our projects, you know, with that in mind, as we're kind of proceeding on making those plans. That just kind of stood out to me. So that's all. And I think that one of our guests here knew the answer to the first question I had, so I don't know if during public comment, if she can provide it.
And we are working on the Bike and Ped Plan. Is that not correct? We have re-kicked that off, if I'm not mistaken, right, Noah?
Yeah, sure, I can give an update on that. So we are working on it. Right now, we're partnering with the Sonoma County Transportation Authority, working on their countywide active transportation plan. And we just, and we participated in it, selected a consultant to help with that, and they are currently going through the procurement process and bringing them on board, signing contracts, that's being funded by a Caltrans grant. I'm expecting them to be on board by the end of this month, and we'll be engaging with them right away. And we're specifically actually working on an accelerated schedule and hope to have our plan completed actually by the end of this year.
Yes, Kay?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we don't forget the folks on the other side of 116 to go to Page. There really isn't a safe, you know, bicycle or footpath at this juncture, and just to make sure when they're looking at that to not forget our Cattatians over there.
Definitely not.
Any other questions?
Thank you. My question's related to Councilmember Ford's question. As I look through these actions and the responsible parties, the key implementers that are listed, some of them say local elected officials, so I'm reading through those like, okay, that's my job. A lot of the, a lot of the, a surprising number of these fall on local police departments, you know, new responsibilities for police departments. So I'm wondering if, has there been somebody on staff who's kind of gone through this whole thing to kind of look at, okay, what are the things we're expected to do under this? And do we have a plan for actually starting to do them? That's my question.
Yes. Yes, staff has reviewed it and looked at the commitments, and I think our intention is to just bring them into kind of our activities as we proceed. I guess that's how I can speak to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, I remembered one more I wanted to ask. In the, on the tables of the high, the high injury network and high injury intersections, Cattati is never listed. We have a small segment of Old Redwood Highway that looks like it's mapped as part of the high injury network.
Yeah, you're right.
We just didn't make the cutoff.
No, I don't know why it's not in the appendix, but you're, you're right.
Not that I want to be on that list.
There might be advantages to being on the list because it might help us to get some funding by addressing a problem. However, we do have a high injury network, and it is Old Redwood Highway, beginning at Commerce and ending at Myrtle or just a little bit below Myrtle. And that is, and that is both for automobiles and pedestrians. So we do have one, I don't know why it's not in that list, but we do have one.
Okay, thanks.
That might be feedback that needs to go back to the group for this.
Oh, well, yeah, no, I actually, I've talked to both, well, I've talked to the SCTA about that, but, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that it was important that we're expanding the data, because I think that that will help us with, with these lists and where there's things. And I, and to Vice Mayor's point also, I think that that will help us in the future too, by capturing more data as these accidents happen, rather than, I think in the example in there, it talked about, you know, rather, well, this person did this and their fault, or this person, you know, kind of looking at the area from a broader perspective of what in the environment, if you will, were there any contributing factors to that accident, not just, you know, what happened right there? So I think that, that that will also help in the future.
Actually, I think you bring up a great point, and though it's not in Cattati, it's very near Cattati, and a perfect example of that is Old Redwood Highway where it meets with Railroad Avenue. That intersection needs improvement badly, and I would argue that the accidents that happen there are a function of design and, in most cases. And that's a perfect example of how we can look at, you know, and a lot of those are broadside accidents that happen there. If you go to the data dashboard, you can click on there and look at how the accidents.
Almost every month, that poor guardrail takes a hit.
How many times do you have to replace a guardrail before?
Many, many times.
But, no, that's a perfect example of how this changes the way that we look at accidents and approach them.
And the good news on that is that is scheduled with the county of Sonoma to get a light there, so that is in their plans to get a light, like, very soon. So accordingly, that's going to happen. So, yeah, no, I thought that the report, God, it was very detailed, and I really liked the way they did the actions. They were thoughtful actions, you know, kind of things that people could think about and articulate and really consider in doing, you know, not real technical things. So I thought that the report itself was very well, very well put, very well put together. And even though it was very, very long, I did get a lot out of it, so I thought that was great. So are there any other questions before I open it? No? Okay, then I will open this up for public comment. Ers, would you like to speak?
Besides my public comment, I have an answer to the question about safe routes to school. I'm not sure I can do both in my three minutes, so may I answer?
Well, why don't you answer the question and then you can make a comment?
Then we'll start my three minutes. Okay, so my organization runs a Safe Routes to School Education and Encouragement Program in individual schools. In terms of safe routes to school plans, in terms of the infrastructure, those are done at the, those are city jurisdictional levels. The city, the, the school districts don't really do a whole lot with that, because it's, the city's on the streets, right? The school district can't put in a sidewalk or a crosswalk. My staff, my Safe Routes to School Director is, is starting to create task forces between cities and their school district and school personnel and us to look at ways to all work together to improve walkability and bikeability around the schools. So there's that answer. Okay.
Now you.
Now I get my public comment. So I have been involved with this Vision Zero project from the beginning, and encourage you to adopt it. But, but I think that only thinking about it as a way to get funding is a narrow way to look at it. It's a revolutionary way to look at how we make decisions about our streets and our roads, right? How people drive is partly dictated by how we have designed the streets and the roads. Using the word accident, I don't ever use the word accident, I talk about crashes, collisions, because the word accident implies it couldn't have been prevented, right? But we have designed our cities and our roads in such a way that, you know, allow cars to drive fast and put bikes and pedestrians off to the side. So what would it look like if instead we made our decisions with safety first? That the first priority is not getting people killed on the street? How would that change how we do everything? It's a paradigm shift in my mind, not just, let's check this off so we can get another grant. And it, it would, it will require, you know, just like other jurisdictions have made, you know, climate emergency resolutions and, you know, homeless emergency resolutions and vision, it's easy to make a resolution, but if you were actually to embrace it, it, it means privileging or prioritizing safety over everything else, over neighbors complaining about losing some parking places because you're narrowing a roadway for safety. It means, you know, slowing things down even though people don't like it. So it's, it's, it's a paradigm shift, it's a different way of looking at things, and I encourage you to take that step. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else wishing to comment? No? Would you check with our Zoom attendees, please?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey, speaking to the Zoom attendees. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay, thank you for that. And I believe we also did get a couple of notices online in support of this action plan. So we did also get that, and those will be attached to the online version web packet.
Correct, there were two comments received after the agenda was published regarding this item, and those are on the web agenda under information received after the agenda was posted, hand imprinted here in the chamber.
Thank you so much. And so with that, any more discussion, or I would be looking for a motion?
Sure, I make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the Sonoma County Vision Zero Action Plan.
Second? I have a motion, second, all in favor? Aye? Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously, thank you, and good job. I think it was a good job by all, the report was very good. All righty, so next up, we have adoption of the revised City of Cattati Investment Policy and Contract Approval to Implement Active Investment Management. Somehow, I think that this might be Angela.
It might be, I'm sure Damian will jump in. And then we also have other participants that should be online, but I'll go ahead and give a start. So, good evening, Mayor, council members, and our public tonight. I'm presenting to you our policy update for investments, as well as a proposal for moving to an active management portfolio using Optum Investment Partners. We have Bob or Dave available for questions or comments on the presentation on this item as well. Let's see if I can get them online. Okay. See if I can get my slides going. So this slide was added post packet publication, it's like the comments, but we wanted to provide council really a miniature economic update in light of all the things that we're seeing in the national environment right now. There is a lot happening, and there's a lot of things that are continuing to happen. And with the budget coming and all these things, we just wanted to take this moment to pause, discuss these things, and talk about, you know, maybe what the impacts are happening. So we have an inverted yield curve still. So the treasury yield curve continues to have a higher return rate on the short-term investments compared to the long-term investments. So there's that insecurity happening about what's going to happen in our future, and so people are keeping their investments in the short term. There's also been some significant bank failures. There were three major bank failures in this fiscal, or this calendar year, and the latest was just in May 1st. These banks were all identified as those who had some investments that are higher-risk assets. And so we're really not seeing this as indicative of something, you know, major happening in the market, but it is something we're being aware of. This is things that are happening, and, and we want to think, be thoughtful about how these impact. We also have the Fed is continuing to raise our interest rates. They had a recent increase from 5% to 5.25% and just in May 3rd, but they are indicating in their public notices that they are, they are thinking they are going to pause those hikes. These interest rate hikes are becoming smaller and smaller, they started, you know, 2%, 1%. Now they're down to just a quarter of a percent. And so what is that indicating? Inflation coming back down, everything's getting more aligned, so they don't need to pull back on the economy as much as they were doing over the last year. And again, now we're in another political-imposed economic state of mind where we have the federal debt ceiling. What's going to happen with that? Are they going to approve the debt ceiling increase? We don't have an imminent date where we would go into default, but what's the impact of that? Could it possibly happen? No, it's not really going to happen, but what are the impacts of these things? How is it going to affect the state and, and interest rates and things going forward? And I do want to share, because I was in discussion with OIP over this, and I had a great quote from Dave. So he said, "We cannot control any aspect of the inverted yield curve. The best advice we can give is don't assume this current yield curve is normal." So just talking about the economy in general, we can't anticipate that any of us is really normal. Don't assume that this will continue for the long term. We recommend investing for the long term, and even at today's rates, with a five-year treasury at 3.5%. It's a solid return for our local agencies. The short-term rates can change quickly, things are changing, you know, just in our environment and our economy quickly, but we can't really just do a good job of our, by speculating. We have to have a long-term plan and a strategy to move forward. So really, that's our impact, that's what we want as our policy. We need to think about these things in the long term and how we're going to, still going to be able to approve and provide for our community going forward. So what are we required to do? So I wanted to revisit the page from our last discussion about our investment policy and revise, and how we're applying all those criteria that we discussed about as our requirements as active agent participants with our prudence standard, and as well as meeting the state requirements. And so we have these requirements for monthly or quarterly reporting that should be And so we have these requirements for monthly or quarterly reporting that should be done. We're going to have our policy update on an annual basis. We want to remain compliant with the prudent investor standard, which is proving the safeguarding of a principal liquidity and the compliance with the state code around safety of our principal, liquidity, and our yield. So these are all fundamental pieces. They were already included within our investment policy, but they only become more emphasized with our proposed revisions to the policy around specifically the prudent investor standard and making sure that we're being transparent, reporting everything out, and meeting the requirements that we need and for our surplus funds. So going more into detail about the specific changes in our policy. So we really kind of think of this as the existing, existing policy plus. So we did have a change to the existing policy around our social considerations, and city staff have really honed into the considerations and found that the revisions provided, provided us an ability to remain compliant with the state code while still feasibly implementing and being able to report on social considerations for our investments. Next is the required review and the investment portfolio for material adverse impacts. So this would be something that goes beyond what is already required for our annual financial audit. So during our audit, we evaluate all of our investments, but this would bring that forward as a part of our quarterly report to council, and that'd be required per the policy. For other new components, make sure I'm on the right slide. We really want to formalize the controls. So all of the next sections are about formalizing what we're going to do to make sure we are being prudent and laying them out so it's not just something that we, is good practices, something we're talking about and we're doing, but let's take credit for it and put it in our policy so that way we have it set forward, you know, as to what we're going to beholden to. So we want to include that the investment in a, that we're going to take before investing in pools and the money market funds, that we're going to review those and make sure that they are investigated for prudency at that level in the investment pools and the money market funds. We're going to make sure that those funds are also collateralized, collateralized as a part of our requirements and have percentage requirements for the collateralization. We're also going to be requiring that we have safekeeping and custody of our assets and investments through a third-party custodian. So we won't be holding these assets in our local accounts or anything else. They will be held, currently, we're proposing to use US Bank as our third-party custodian because we already have a relationship with them, and so we can get a better rate with them. They hold our bonds. We also want to verify that we have a diversification of risk. Again, this is something that we do, but we didn't have clearly documented within our policy previously, so that no more than 5% will be from a single issuer. This does not include pools or federal treasuries. Next, we stepped into controls, kind of continued and enhanced, where we specify that the maximum securities will be no more than five years. This is already set forward in the state requirements that they should not be longer than five years. And so that will keep, bring us into consistency with state law and being specific. It was already in our current policy, but it was within the tables for each investment, what the maturity terms are. And so this just sped, sped it all out in one section, that none of them shall exceed five years. While this added, we added clarification on internal control risks and responsibility to be held by the administrative services and that we will be compliant to our policy in developing additional procedures that are required per the policy. So we will be developing any of the procedures that go along making purchases and reporting as well. It sets this performance standard for benchmark objectives, and this would be setting a goal for where we want our returns to be and making sure that we're hitting those and reporting out if we aren't meeting those. So this is really a kind of a turn on our investments where it was like, what's great if we get some good investment returns, but we're not going to try and strive for excellence or something above and beyond. This actually helps us direct to what we want to be able to perform to and hold ourselves accountable to try and reach those benchmarks and report out against those benchmarks. It also mandates the quarterly reporting as well as an annual review of the investment So again, this is a lot of additions to our policy. These things were already kind of happening, but really are possible unless we have a partner to help us go through these processes and procedures and better strategic objectives at actively managing this, but also actively managing our managing of it so that we can both work on a policy, on our processes, make sure they're consistent with our cash flow requirements, with our capital projects. And that really comes from our desire to have this active management of our surplus funds and partnering with OIP to provide that service to better utilize these surplus funds. So at our last meeting, council requested a cost analysis comparing active versus kind of passive management, and it was kind of more of like a, what would it be if we had pooled funds and moved to something different? And so we did provide a brief calculation, and it's included at packet page 178. And the sample shows that really there is a return on investment that's increased by using active management, specifically using OPI, even with the fees that are imposed. So with this, we are really eager to get our surplus funds working more for the city by engaging in this partnership. This is just a reminder slide that really it is a challenge for small cities like ours. This is not something that's really available due to the capacity of staff, the knowledge of staff, or even the accessibility of staff to get the information to make these investments. So if we have the knowledge, we might not have the access to a team that can provide us, you know, information on the assets that are available for sale on a timely basis. And so this opportunity really is, is new, and that's why OIP is, we think is a great partner because this is where they are strategically focusing themselves in a niche that's not being overly served because other investment banks and brokers don't want to work with cities or any, even individuals that have smaller assets less than the 25 million. So if council chooses to approve staff's recommendation, we would move forward with engaging our investment advisory services with OIP and engaging with the custodial bank, which again, we're looking at US Bank, and TVI Investments. We've provided background information on TVI. They are someone that we've been, I've been having discussions with, with quite a long time around the broker dealer. He's provided, he's been wanting our business for a while. I've been providing just what's happening in our environment, our economics, what's happening in the marketplace. And so we've built a great partnership already with them and just conversations without even the, us paying them anything. And so we would really advise using them to go forward. And then we would have those, bring them on. We would then start right away actively moving some funds, setting up our trust account with US Bank in order to start evaluating and getting some returns on our surplus funds. And so that is the end of the presentation, and we're happy to address any questions, concerns, and move forward. Questions? Yes? Laura?
Thank you. I have a few questions. First of all, I'm just trying to understand the, the role of the third-party custodian and if they're given these surprising number of bank failures recently, if our third-party custodian were to suddenly fail, what would the impact be on us?
So per our investment policy, all of our individual investments would be under the FDIC limits, and so they would be covered. So that's the immediate coverage, right? So that's where we have our policy, where those pieces would be covered. If US Bank goes under, that would be a significant item that would have other implications around the nation. So that would, we, our bonds would have some issues because all of them are being held by US Bank as well. So I, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't want to speculate beyond that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Another question I have is regarding the internal controls. I was happy to see all these updates to it. When you were developing the changes and additions to the internal controls, were there some industry best practices that you were referring to? Or I'm just sort of curious how you, how you developed all the individual elements that you wanted to put in place?
Absolutely. So I'm, I, again, we're a small city, so I took our policy and I said, "Hey, Dave, you know what the best practices are. You've been in the industry, you've been doing this." And they said, "Hey, give us your investment policy. We will help update it to what the best practices are." And they did this before they even came and talked to you guys in person. They did it first glance, and then Damian and I went through it with them. And so it's really relying on their expertise to make sure we're bringing it up to the best standards possible.
Okay. Thank you. And last question, could you just explain for my benefit, the collateralization piece? And I didn't quite understand what that meant or how it, how it works for the 110% and the 102% for the different investments?
So David, I think that would probably be more technical if you wouldn't mind assisting with the collateralization component.
Yeah, absolutely. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Yeah, so different types of investments have different collateralization requirements. The most common term that you see that is listed with bank deposits themselves, so deposits in a checking account require collateralization, and that's one of the issues that happened recently with some of those bank failures is they had sufficient collateral, but the problem is they had longer-term investments or investments that had longer maturities than the demands for liquidity in that space. What we're talking about in this policy is really referencing some of those pooled accounts and CDs where those banks that are ultimately issuing or those corporations that are issuing CDs out there in the marketplace, they're required to have that additional collateral, meaning that they have to have access to liquid funds that exceed the amount of the investments that they're issuing. So if we're investing in a Bank of America CD for $250,000, they're required to maintain that additional liquid collateral access to liquid funds. It doesn't have to be maintained in cash. It just has to be liquid by nature and accessible to them. And so LAIF has a liquidity requirement and a collateralization requirement. So do county pools, and so do the JPA pools as well. So you'll see those across the spectrum in terms of banks and pools that have liquid needs, access to the funds quickly, have to have some of those additional liquidity requirements as opposed to federal treasuries and federal agencies. Those are longer-term investments. There's no, there's no actual collateralization requirement on those.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Can I, can I re-ask one of Vice Mayor Sparks's questions? Because I didn't, I didn't understand the answer. What does the custodial bank do?
So they just hold the investments. So they are really just holding the investments. So they hold the CDs, they hold the federal treasuries that we, that we hold.
So the CDs are not, let's say we use US Bank, are not US Bank CDs necessarily?
Correct.
They're, and so what does it mean to hold them? It's, it's a piece of paper in a file? It means they manage the, the computer account that?
Exactly.
What does that mean?
Yes. So they, they hold the funds and then they hold, they give us reports on them, just like you would have, we currently have an account with RBC. So RBC doesn't have those, they are, the, the funds that we're purchasing, they just purchase them and hold them for us and report out on them. So we're not holding those funds.
So they're kind of like my, you know, if I was an active stock trader, like my stockbroker or something like that? Who kind of manages my purchases, but?
Right. So the broker dealers don't hold the purchase. They just buy them and sell them, and then we hold them in another account, and that account would be the, the third party.
I'm wondering if?
I think David wants to say something. He's got his hand up.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. I just wanted to bring it down to a level that everybody in the audience might go to understand. It's very similar to a brokerage account, as you just described, where if I have a TD Ameritrade account or something like that, they are the holder of the cash until the purchase gets made. They're the bank that's actually transacting that transaction when the broker dealer sends those instructions. They're sending the money out to that entity to make that investment. They're reporting out on the investments themselves and the fair market value on those investments, which Angela is required to have in her financial statements. And then when the money comes back in on a matured investment, they immediately put it into a money market fund that the city decides upon so that even money in between investments is making interest on the money. So they're coordinating all that. They have reporting requirements, and they're holding cash in very short stints when we're in between investments.
Great. Thanks. Can I ask one more? So in the, in the new reporting section in the policy, it says the city administrative services director may review and render quarterly reports to the city council. Is that at your option? At, why does it say "may" instead of "will"?
It's consistent with state law. So we just put "may." That way, if, if we miss one, one quarter, we're, we're still compliant with state law. It would just be a policy thing. Our goal is to continue to do the quarterly reports and provide them, but we're not required by state law. State law just says "may." So I wanted to them to be consistent. If that's something that is a desired change, then that can be changed, but then it, you know, we want to make sure we're, we're acting on a policy that's, that's going to continue to work in perpetuity.
But the intent is to provide quarterly reports?
Absolutely. Yes.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Then I will open this up for public comment, and we have lost our audience here. So Kevin, would you please go to our Zoom audience?
Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you. I will bring it back. Is there any other discussion? If not, I would be looking for a motion.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving the update of the investment management policy within the City of Cotati's financial principles and policies and authorize the city manager to take actions necessary to begin actively managing the city's surplus funds in compliance with the investment policy, including engaging with Optum Investment Partners.
Second.
That was a mouthful.
I know. All in, all in one breath. I was impressed.
That was very good. Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. That passes unanimously. Yes. And then we are going to take a five-minute break.
Okay, I would like to call our meeting back to order after our recess and we will be moving on to our next item, which is the Dash Cam Agreement for Police Electric Vehicles.
Yes, I'll start this one out.
You'll start that one, okay?
Yeah. So if you think this, you're having deja vu, you're not. We actually have talked about this before, but we're just coming back because last time we had the conversation, staff didn't really have a lot of the information to answer some of the questions the council had. So we did, we paused on ordering that equipment and have gone back and hopefully figured out the answers to all the questions that were asked before. I will also say that in addition to it just being myself last time who was only half-informed in the conversation, the chief is also here tonight. We do have two people from Axon, who is the vendor on Zoom, who can also help answer questions if there's any questions that the chief or I can't answer. All right, so ALPRs, that's an acronym for Automated License Plate Recognition Systems. And what they do is they capture a vehicle's license plate and transform that license plate image into alphanumeric characters and compare it to a hot list, which is put out by Department of Justice through the NCIC. And this basically is a list, the hot list is basically a list of vehicles that are wanted in association with some crime. So there might be, I mean, it can be any variety of things. It might be a missing person, it might be a murder, it might be just a stolen vehicle. There's a lot of reasons why a vehicle license plate would be sought by law enforcement. So that's how it ends up. These get sent basically to the central repository and then they get sent out to law enforcement agencies to basically keep a lookout for this vehicle because it's wanted. And ALPR databases, there is, I will point out on page, packet page 200, that's just a screenshot for all the information that exists inside an ALPR system. So it's an image of sort of the, basically the picture, it's a still image, a picture of the license plate, the OCR interpretation of that license plate so that you see the original image, plus you can also see what the computer thought it saw. So if there's any inaccuracy in that reading, you can verify that. And then it also has the date, time, and the spatial location of the image where that was taken. So that's just at its core, that's what ALPR systems do. They basically take an image of a license plate, they tell you where and when it was there. And then if there's something on this hot list that DOJ puts out, it just literally compares it to a hot list. If there is a ping, in other words, if the plate matches up to something in the hot list, then it basically flags the officer. And then the officer would, is then responsible for confirming the flag, right? So you don't act just on the flag, you have to confirm the information that triggered the flag. And I will say also, the owner in that image, that's the, the owner is the officer, not the owner of the vehicle that the plate's on, right? So the ALPR systems, they don't read plates in the sense that they don't, I should say they don't run plates. So there's no connection between the LPR system and say like a DMV database that might have the registration information of the owners. That's the responsibility of the police officer, sort of in follow-up, to confirm that this plate actually is still wanted and making sure it's the right plate, all the stuff that, all the due diligence they have to do before they take any action. So specifically, the item tonight is about the Axon Dash Cam. And just to take a step back from the ALPR, one of the primary purposes of the system that's being proposed is to take video imaging, take video capture of what happens before stop. So right now, all of our officers do have body cameras, so when they exit the vehicle, it does capture all, everything that happens when they exit the vehicle. But sometimes things, oftentimes in traffic stops in particular, things will happen prior to actually exiting the vehicle. That's important and potentially relevant to, you know, what happens when the officer exits the vehicle. So the ALPR, or I'm sorry, the Dash Cam device is, that's one of its primary functions, is just to capture everything that occurs outside the vehicle prior to the officer leaving the vehicle. And then this conversation came up because while we have the video camera to record the stop, this is sort of a software-enabled feature that could be turned on, the LPR feature. So anyway, that led to the conversation before, just to remind everyone that this was sort of an ancillary feature to what the main purpose of the video cameras were for. All right, so the Axon system specifically, this is in the staff report, but I'll just reiterate the high points. So how these work is the Dash Cam, it does integrate into the other Axon products that the officer uses, the BodyCam and some of the other devices. So they trigger, you know, like they trigger automatically when certain things happen. So it's not a voluntary thing, it's an involuntary sort of trigger so that it all happens seamlessly, regardless of the stressfulness of the situation. When the officer returns back to the yard, it all gets uploaded to evidence.com, which is just a secure website that Axon runs. That's where our BodyCam video goes, that's where the Dash Cam video would go, that's where if the council moves forward on the ALPR feature, that's where the LPR information goes. The ALPR and all the information in this evidence.com website is fully compliant with the cybersecurity standards set by the FBI. It's called the CGIS Standards, Criminal Justice Information System Standards. They publish best practices and standards to be compliant, to hold criminal justice-type information. Evidence.com is a cloud solution and it's, we've been using it more and more for, as I mentioned, the information that we collect, but also other case information that's associated with it. Because that's how we, with the large files associated with all this video filing, video files that we have, we can package it up and send it to like the district attorney for cases and things like that. The hot lists, as I mentioned earlier, that's Department of Justice that pushes that out. The Axon systems, they update those hot lists every six hours. So every six hours is a new version of the list that gets published and then goes out to all the vehicles that have ALPRs. Vehicle retention, or I'm sorry, ALPR retention. So there is also a screenshot on packet page 202, just a screenshot from the Axon system. And this just gives you an idea of, you know, it's user-definable. Our city policy, which is based on government code related to video retention, is one year. And so that's what it's set at currently. There are definitely variations in retentions that you see, but with regard to the, at least the state law standard, that isn't our current policy, it's one year. The way the Axon system works with the plate reads is that when they're uploaded to evidence.com, they're only available, the Axon system only has the plate reads available to Cattati PD. So no other police department can directly access it. How they would access it is if they are investigating a case, they would have to, like any other, you know, law enforcement request, would have to be through a channel where, and they'd have to have obviously, you know, legitimate law enforcement need for it. They would have to ask the Cattati PD for the record and then one of our authorized users would have to do the search for the record and then provide them with the information. So it's not available even to other law enforcement agencies in the Axon system. The Axon system does have a public website, that's on page 203, it's a screenshot, just to give you an idea. So it's a transparency thing that Axon does that would be available to us if we went forward with this. And the system does log user activity by agency name, date, time, and purpose of the search. So that's always available if system audits were performed to confirm that all the searches are legitimate. And I think that is all the high points. Just the last thing I'll add is under financial considerations, the agreement attached is a five-year agreement. And with all the features, it would be $63,000 basically over five years. That's with ALPR. If ALPR is not included, it's $55,000 over that same five years. But it's at a much lower cost if it's included at the initial purchase. If we tried to add it later, it'd be almost twice as much. So, you know, rather than basically $7,000, it'd be $15,000 if it was ordered separately. So that's why we paused on the order and just decided that it'd be better to have just a more informed discussion before we move forward on it. And with that, I'd be happy to give it to the chief to add some additional information.
Yeah, thank you, counsel. Damian covered a lot there. I just wanted to add that I would like to see this option. So what we're missing is, if you picture the officer driving down the road, what we're missing is the video capture of probable cause to stop a suspected DUI offender. It would be nice to capture that. Officers see a lot of crazy things driving around. They see domestic violence in a moving car, people talking on cell phones, et cetera. Again, it would be nice to capture what the officer is seeing, capturing that probable cause for the stop. And like the city manager said, it's associated then with their body-worn camera. Any photographs they take can also put in evidence.com. So when I talk about like a domestic violence case, like a rolling domestic violence arrest, we would have the video from the officer's point of view of driving to stop the car, then the interaction on body-worn camera now that they're out of the car, any photographs taken. All of those, all of that media, whether it's the photographs taken by iPhone, the body-worn camera, or the in-car camera, that would all be associated in one case together in evidence.com and be available for discovery for both prosecution and defense attorneys. And so I think it's a good enhancement for us and I think it helps with transparency as well.
All right, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? I had a question about the police policy regarding data retention. Maybe you could help me find where it says the one year in our policy. I'm looking at the ALPR section and it just says in accordance with our, or something like that, with our established data retention guidelines. So I'm wondering if you could just direct me where the actual time is located?
It'll take me a minute, but I will...
Okay. I'll let you work on that. And then I also had some questions for, maybe for the vendors, if they might respond. I was reading through the frequently asked questions list that was included as a link in the agenda packet and I had some questions... a link in the agenda packet, and I had some questions about data, data sharing. In two of the answers, it talks about how the capability to share data with other agencies and the capability to share data with third-party contractors such as Vigilant is not currently implemented, but could be added as a future feature. So I'm wondering if that were to be, if that, if those data sharing capabilities were to be added, would that have to be turned on by us proactively, or is that something that would just start happening if you were to add those features?
So.
Hi. Mayor Harvey and members of council, thanks for having us today. My name is Daniel Burton, I'm the Axon representative for Qatadi PD. I also have Assad Khan on the call as well, and he is the systems engineer with Axon. So to answer those specific questions, I would say, we don't currently have a partnership with Vigilant, nor do we have a, our current partnership with inter-agency sharing. So I would say, it's up to say what that would look like if and when we do get to that. It's not really in place right now. So I guess, I can't really give an answer to what would happen if we were to make that available.
So I guess my question is, maybe I can reframe it so you understand. I have concerns about data privacy, and one of the features I like about your system is that the data is not automatically shared with Vigilant or with other agencies. So I would like to have some assurance that that's going to remain the case in the future, unless we do something proactive to change that.
Well, we would never start just sharing data without permission from agencies. So sharing data is entirely up to the agency because the agency owns that data. So Axon isn't just going to automatically start sharing ALPR data, body camera footage, or in-car camera footage with agencies or other companies without the consent of, of the agency, obviously.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question for you, which is, in your frequently asked questions, it says that you ask customers to sign a data sharing agreement to be used for machine learning and anonymized data that you would use for your own purposes. Is that a mandatory part of the contract in order to, to do the agreement? Or is it okay for us to just say, no, no, thank you, we wouldn't like to participate in that?
I don't have an answer for that, I'm not sure.
Just to talk more to the feature, sorry, this is Assad Khan with Axon as well, too. Just to talk more to that feature, as what actually does is, our system is 93% accurate when it reads a plate in front of you, right? But the officer does have a way to kind of train the system to get better in case it doesn't pick up this license plate correctly, right? So when you do get a license plate read or a hit through our system, you do have the ability to tell the system if it's correct or incorrect. And really, all you're doing is trying to train the system to get better. That data is not shared, really is all kind of making that AI learning a little bit better for you.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense to me.
Is a good example of that, the, the one that you have in the picture? Because I view that as an H-H-O-P-I-E, and it interpreted it as H-H-D-P-I-E. Is that a good example of what you're talking about?
Exactly, that would be it, right? So that way, at least you can create an audit within the system to say, you know, the, the license plate that was flagged is actually not the right license plate. So that way, it doesn't incorrectly read it again in future tense.
Thank you. Chief, did you have something to add?
Just for the vice mayor, it's in the Lexible Policy, it's 470.5, it's on page 417, and it describes the, the one-year data retention policy.
470 point, 470 point, point five?
Point five.
I see. Okay, thank you very much.
Sylvia?
Yes, I had a question about the ALPR hot list that's created. It says here that is generated by police officers, so I imagine it's different police officers in different jurisdictions create a hot list. Entering vehicle plates associated with crimes. And so that's a question that I had, associated crimes, is that just, are those stops, arrests, misdemeanors, felonies, what's considered associated with crimes? Or is it convictions, or, you know, what level is considered that?
So all of the license plates that are, are read will go into a database, and they may be associated with a crime that we don't even know occurred yet. And so these ALPRs, they're investigative tools as well. So for example, if our city had a unique crime and we couldn't solve that unique crime, and say, say a different jurisdiction has a similar unique crime and they do have a suspect or somebody they arrested, and so that person has a car, then once that information is shared, we could check our database of our license plate reads to see if that car was in our city and involved in that unique crime. Another example would be, unfortunately, there's, there's an increase in anti-Semitic crime. And as you're aware, we have a synagogue in our town, they ask for extra patrol often, especially during certain holidays for the Jewish community. And we travel there a lot around the synagogue in that vicinity. Another jurisdiction could have a anti-Semitic crime against the synagogue, have a suspect, and then we could look to see if they were in our vicinity. Or if there was vandalism at the synagogue and we didn't have a suspect, there's a, maybe there's another person caught in a different jurisdiction with a similar crime, and now we're checking for license plate reads. So it's not, it's, it's beyond the DOJ hits, it's an investigative tool as well.
Yeah, and I appreciate, you know, especially in those situations that you mentioned, but I was just wondering about, the, the list is created by police officers, and how are those plates, are those vehicle plates submitted, you know, what kind of crimes?
How do they migrate into the system?
Right, what type of crimes would trigger being on the hot list?
So they get there through the Department of Justice, so all police departments have COLT's entries, so it's California Law Enforcement Transmission System. So like, for example, a stolen car would be loaded up by a Qatadi police dispatcher if it was stolen in our jurisdiction, and that would migrate to DOJ, and that would make it to the hot list. You, you can request that DOJ also put other unique crimes as a hot list. Amber alerts, for example, as well. So you see the amber alerts on TV, those will migrate in the system as well, so not just stolen cars, but even amber, amber alerts or significant crimes, they can migrate to the hot list. And when an officer passes that car, it will show up on their MDC.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was like a threshold of crime. I mean, crime is crime, but you know, what if it was something minor that a police officer said, oh, well, I'm going to submit him to a hot list? You know, what, is there a threshold for that?
Not really, so even beyond, so there's a lot of capabilities, and maybe our Axon people can, can help me with this. But if we had our own car that we wanted to look for, so say we had a stalking victim, and this is ongoing, and we knew what the stalker drove, and, and he keeps committing this stalking crime, we could enter that ourselves and flag that, and that would even be associated with the DOJ hot list, for example.
Chief, I can add something to that as well. So some examples of crimes that you could, so within evidence.com, which is where everything is hosted, you can choose the categories that you want to alert officers on for specific, for specific crimes. So crimes such as carjackings, batteries, assaults, felony theft, fugitives, missing persons, amber alerts, chief mentioned, violation of order protection, things like that, you can set those specific alerts. And if there's things like, that you may not find value, or maybe they're lower-level crimes such as stolen license plate, something like that, you can, you can take that off the checklist for things that you want to get hits within the ALPR system.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, I don't know if anyone else has follow-ups on that, but thank you very much.
Ben?
No, the chief answered mine.
Okay, okay.
I, I read somewhere in all of this that it's the police are the only ones who have visibility into the system, and I just wanted to check if we were to set up a citizen oversight committee, as we have talked about, would they be able to have access to the data, or is it only limited to hired police?
I would think it would be DOJ-sensitive.
Yeah, citizens wouldn't have access to that. I mean, you could aggregated data, like what's shown on the, like the public portal, that kind of thing, maybe, but not the actual individual data.
Right, well, I'm thinking, you know, to Sylvia's point about the threshold and what type of crimes are being, you know, it's being used to track, and, you know, again, it's not necessarily a negative thing, could be positive information that we want to highlight, that I just want to make sure that, you know, if, if and when we do get this together, that they, this could be very good information for them to have access to also. Not necessarily the actual numbers, but like the types of crimes that are impacted by this system.
It's, yeah, it's, I think it's, well, I, part of, I think maybe part of the answer to that question is, this particular system does have a, on the public-facing webpage, it tells you the hot list categories, so at least the categories of things that are on the hot lists.
Right, but I mean, specific to Qatadi, right?
You mean if we, if our agency added specific stuff to it?
No, it sounded like our representative from Axon said that we could, for example, like stolen plates, if we didn't want to flag stolen plates, we wouldn't have to do that. Is that what your?
Oh, yeah, you can turn, you can turn categories on and off.
Is that what the question?
I guess, no, I, I think what I'm, what I'm, maybe I'm not saying it well. What, what I'm, I guess I'm looking for a bit of a, a data analysis on the efficacy of the system and how it, how it positively impacts Qatadi and crime in Qatadi, right? And so I'm just looking at how we would evaluate that moving forward, because there's definitely some privacy concerns, but I also hear the potential benefits, so I'm just looking at a way of measuring that benefit.
So can I say that another way, chief? So maybe if, because most of what it's used for is investigative purposes and helping solve crimes and that, so maybe as part of the report that you do to us, where it's been helpful for certain things, you can highlight, you know, this is what, where this has been useful to us in solving X, Y, and Z.
So included in the annual report?
You know, yes, a, a part of the audit, so whether it's, I mean, again, I, I'm, you know, I'm still an advocate for the citizen oversight committee, but, you know, before we have that, yes, as being part of the report. I mean, basically just, you know, we have these privacy concerns, and I hear what you're saying about the potential benefits, I'd just like to see what they are, I'd like to see them, the actual, you know, events in which having this helped solve that crime or get that stalker off the street, or, you know, what, all of these great, or get this poor kid returned to their parents, or, you know, whatever. That it would be helpful to hear how it's working rather than just, you know, what our concerns are. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
One more thing I'll just add is a, just on a different, slightly different note, but to clarify, because I know we've been talking about what's on the hot list in terms of crimes, but they're not, so what's, what's kind of, what makes it a little bit difficult to define it is that it's not necessarily crimes, right? It could be like missing people and things like that, that's not a crime, but you're looking for a license plate because you think it's associated with a missing person. That may or may not be a crime. And the best list I've seen is on packet page 200 and 201, probably those numbered items, one through five, have at least sort of general categories of why something would be on the hot list, which could be a crime, or it could be a missing vehicle, or it could be a missing person. So there's a wide variety of reasons why it might be there.
Yeah, I actually circled one of those, number three, locate witnesses and victims of violent crime. I don't know if that's, I don't know. It feels like if, if, if a victim doesn't want to kind of come forward or something, you know, I don't know, it just feels like it's a breach of their, of their wanting to be anonymous or something, I don't know. And I know in some cases it's needed, it just kind of felt a little kind of big brotherish in a way.
Well, I mean, chief probably can talk better.
Well, that wouldn't be a hot list thing, that would probably be, sounds like unique to an agency looking for that, yeah. And I, and I hear what you're saying, I understand what you're saying.
But I think it's up to people, whether they want to participate or not, you know, in a.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not talking about the hot list either, I'm just talking about what the benefits of having it are for Qatadi specifically, right? Like when we were talking about the beanbag rifles, right? It's like, well, you know, when was this used, under what circumstances, how did it benefit Qatadi? I have the same questions about this, right? Like I recognize there could be benefits, but I'd like to, you know, learn, how was this used, how did it help, why this was a good thing for Qatadi?
So again, I think a first step would be for you to, as you utilize this, because I believe you will, to provide back to the council examples of where this has been beneficial, so that people can get the gist of it, because you're in the deep weeds of it, but people want to understand how it's useful, because I have no doubt that it isn't useful, it's just another tool-in-tool case, but I think people need to understand how it was useful to you in solving X, Y, or Z.
So council's looking for transparency?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, it's totally doable.
This is Assad Khan here. I just want to elaborate on the hot list, how it is actually shared with the vehicles, at least when it comes to the vendor, the Axon system. That hot list is actually not searchable, right? So it's going to be an extract from the NCI database and sent all in an encrypted fashion to the vehicles. Any car that passes by that license plate reader, if it does get flagged, it notifies that officer at that point, that so-and-so vehicle has been flagged. So coming back to that question about sharing that information, really, it's not even a searchable hot list at that point. Only what comes across as a hit is what's going to get notified to you. You do have the ability, I think chief was getting to this before, is you do have the ability to create your own local hot list, as opposed to the agency had a BOLO or something that was not published to the national NCIC as of yet. You do have the ability to create your own hot list records, for instance, basically searchability. And beyond that, I mean, we do have the ability to integrate with state hot lists, really, so. But again, what I want to make on this point is, that hot list is not really a searchable
Okay. Any other questions? Not seeing any. Then I will open this up for public comment, and there was no one left in the audience here, so Kevin, would you do the honors?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end the public comment.
Okay, so any further discussion? Yes?
Thank you. I, I was pleased to learn that we can have local control over our data retention. I would feel comfortable approving the ALPR system purchase if we ratcheted down the data retention. So at the one-year level, I think that's totally unnecessary and too much of a privacy invasion in terms of storing so much dragnet personal data. So I was looking at our police policy just now, and the one-year that's referenced in government code, if you look at the code, it, it's talking about video recordings, not photographs. And so I don't think, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but it doesn't seem to me that we are legally required to hold on to ALPR data for a year, especially since in the staff report it says jurisdictions range typically from 60 days to two years on their ALPR data. So I would feel comfortable purchasing the ALPR system if we could reduce that data retention. My personal preference would be very short, something like seven days or 14 days, but I'd be open to hearing from my colleagues about what they, what they think about that. I'd be open to hearing from my colleagues about what they, what they think about that. And I'd like to see us make a policy, police policy adjustment about our ALPR retention for at least the Axon system, since I know we might not have control right now over the data retention for the vigilance system that's through the consortium, but for what we have control over, to reduce the data retention, period. And I'd also like to know what our procedure for auditing, it said that the searches would be auditable, which was nice, it's like anytime that someone from our agency searches, that's recorded, and it'd be nice if that could, information about that could be included in the, in the police report, just, you know, what are, what kinds of things are we searching for, and how are we making use of it? But my main concern is the data retention, so I'd like to hear what my colleagues think about that.
Did you? Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure you asked a question, but you, but you did, you did acknowledge me, and I raised my hand, so. I was going to make a comment, which is that, you know, we look very, very hard to try to identify authority for retaining the documents for less than one year. The standard is that any city record, and records kind of narrowly defined in this context, needs to be retained for two years. And there are certain exceptions, including the one that's referenced here. The way these systems work, they do use a video, video camera, and those are captures from video, so we think it's justifiable to use the one-year standard, but we haven't found any good authority for going below one year in terms of retention. So that's why your staff report and your policy has long suggested the one-year retention schedule. I'm here to readily acknowledge that many jurisdictions have shorter retention periods. I just don't know what authority they're relying upon, and we looked, we spent a regrettable amount of time trying to find, because I knew where you guys were, were on this, and I, we just can't find the authority.
I'll also just add to that, the only police agency that I know, that I know about that has some sort of statutory authority, at least clearly defined, is, is the CHP, but they have a special carve-out for some reason, there's some special legislation that...
Yeah, it actually prevents them from obtaining the document, the information for longer than, is it 30 days or 60 days?
Sixty days.
I mean, this, the legislature really needs to fix this problem, because we have this general records retention policy, and so if law enforcement wants to have the document, the information retained for a period of time for investigatory purposes, that turns it into a record under these records retention statutes, and then you have to retain it for two years or one year, or whatever it is. I think everyone, including the legislature, would readily acknowledge that this information, I don't know, that is a dragnet, you have a lot of information out there, it's very sensitive, it, there's no reason, you know, if police doesn't need it, it shouldn't be retained, right? It should be destroyed. But it's more of a state law problem than something we can, we can try to resolve.
Can I ask a follow-up based on that? So a follow-up question, if we don't retain it at all, if we set the retention to zero, then have we not created a record and we do not have to retain it at that point?
Well, I know some of the systems have a kind of a different setup where all the documents are retained by the company, and, and the jurisdiction only retains the records that it asks for. So that's a possibility. I don't think there's any way, because I think law enforcement needs, you know, may need access to records that they became aware of the need for 14 days after, so there's really no way to, to know that zero would work for law enforcement. So once you, once you make that decision at the law enforcement level, it becomes a record, and you're stuck with the state law requirement.
Well, I can answer the question on no retention, that will not work. So I've, we've experienced in Qatadi, unfortunately, people trying to report things that didn't happen. So, for example, there was somebody that I think he had too much to drink downtown and tried to report his vehicle stolen, and our officers said, this just doesn't feel right, and checked the system, and his car was parked nearby. We've also had the same experience with people with dementia. So there, we have to have some kind of retention. And I go back, as far as retention goes, I like the year, I described unique crimes, right? Sometimes six months go by, nine months go by, that's when the other jurisdiction says, we have a unique crime, could happen in your city, we're checking that, or when I talk about the synagogue, there needs to be, I think there's a need for the one-year retention to solve crime, but there definitely needs to, there can't be zero retention, that just, I just don't see that happening.
Well, my question was more of a legal question. I was just trying to understand, like legally, would that mean that we weren't creating a record?
I think it would, but I just don't think it would work practically for the reasons the chief, the chief mentioned. Yeah. I mean, that, that's, I said earlier that the definition of record in this context is narrow, and that's one of the things, if you're not retaining it for future reference, then it's not a record for this purpose. So your point is well taken, right? If we didn't, if it was zero, then it wouldn't be a record.
And the legal requirements are not just records associated with a, with an investigation, they're all records.
Correct, oh, sorry, correct, they're all city records, that's just the general records retention rule, is two years, and then there's certain exceptions for certain categories, you can retain for less than, less than two years.
Yes.
So, so now I'm a little confused. So if, if we're saying it is a record, if we keep it for a year, then why is it we don't have to keep it for two then?
We think it's reasonable to rely on the video recording, one-year policy that's allowed under state law, I not remember, I think it's 34,090.6, it says one year for routine video recordings. While technically what's captured is a, is a screenshot, it was produced from a video recording, so we believe that's a reasonable approach to conclude that the, that the information is a video recording, and so one year would be appropriate if, if you make that interpretation.
So it's a video recording, not a record?
Well, a video recording could be a record, under the, under, the way that state law defines it, records are all formed, audio, video, documentary evidence, those are all considered records under state law.
So, so the distinction then is, we keep the video for one year unless it's used in an investigation or becomes evidence, in which case it then becomes a record and requires two years? Is that correct?
If, if it were evidence that were used, we would retain it for as long as we needed it.
Right.
And, and from two years from the end of that point, I think, is the way it would work. If you, if you bring in, if you bring in something to use in an investigation, it's going to be treated differently than, than the routine stuff that we, that we maybe just keep on an ongoing basis.
Because it could be years before a case gets brought.
Correct.
And dealt with, so you have to keep whatever your evidence is during that whole...
And, and, I mean, the cities have, has a, has a records retention schedule, and it treats criminal evidence very differently than other things. It goes into, you know, box for that, that case, and it, and it gets retained for at least five years, I think, until after the case is over.
Yes, it would be discovery at that point, and then so the defense and prosecution would have a record or that, and then it would live there.
Right, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand what the distinction is between video and record. If we're calling the video a record, then we have to keep it for two years, but I'm hearing you say it's video, not a record, so we only need to keep it for one.
Well, video's a record, okay, so that, that's the first thing. So the general rule for all records is two years. There's a specific statute, though, that says if you have a record that is, is video, ongoing, routine video, you don't have to keep it for two years.
Okay.
You can only keep it for one.
Okay, thank you.
You can destroy it after one year. Sorry about the confusion.
No, that's the part I didn't understand, thank you.
Yes, just a follow-up question on this, that section that is the carve-out talks about routine video monitoring being related to regular and ongoing operations of the department, jail observation and monitoring systems, building security recording. It, it just seems like our ALPR reads are a completely different kind of data than this. And I'm, I'm just curious, the jurisdictions who have a shorter records retention, period, have they gotten into any trouble for that? Have there been lawsuits?
I, I'm not aware of any lawsuits or trouble that any agencies have, have gotten into. I don't know that they're really, I don't know, we didn't, we didn't really catalog how many agencies, I know there are some agencies out there with shorter policies, but I think the Lexipol policy is one year, so most of the agencies do have the one-year policy.
Personally, if the choices retain this pretty invasive amount of data for an entire year, for everyone who, and these, these cameras are going to be substantially better than the cameras on the older police cars at reading the plates, which is good, they're going to be able to read lots of lanes, they're going to get a lot more data. If the choices, we're going to upload all of that data for, and keep it for a year, or not record it, I would come down on the side of let's not retain it, because it is such a huge amount of data, and if we had 100% trust that nothing could ever be leaked, or, or there was no security breaches possible, then I would feel more comfortable, but we've all experienced the fact that data breaches happen, and because of that, I just do not feel comfortable with the trade-off here of retaining it for so long. I'd be willing to be brave and set our retention policy lower, but if we're not willing to do that as a city, then my preference would be to not retain the data.
You know, one, one thing that occurred to me when I was looking at the report, that really, that I think bears emphasis, is that the data by itself is not, it doesn't, by itself is not personally identifiable, like it's just the license plate, you don't know who that's associated with. The only way to know that information would be to, to match it with the DMV database, and the public doesn't have access to it. So even if there were a leak, it wouldn't really be valuable to anyone.
There's no, no, there's no personal information gathered.
I think that's somewhat naive in a, in a, in an age, age of big data analysis, where companies are able to uniquely identify people to their location data even without having personally identifiable data.
What I'm just sharing is that if a system like this was hacked, it would have a bunch of license plate numbers, it would not have people's names, addresses, date of birth, nothing.
It would have where their car was, though, too.
Which would be right in front of their house.
Or, or it could be somewhere that they don't necessarily want whoever hacked to know that they were, you know, but yes.
But you'd have to go through an awful lot of data to, to, to get that, and you'd have to understand the data files, and you'd have to understand, you know, what those records look like. I mean, you'd have to know an awful lot to be able to do that.
If you were, if you were a bad actor who was purposely attacking this kind of system, you would have the expertise to do that kind of analysis, presumably.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, you know, frankly, a better target would be the DMV database, really, if someone wants to go after that kind of information. But, I mean, the point's taken, that any database is theoretical, theoretically hackable. You know, what you can actually do with it, I guess, is open to debate, but...
And, and I would just say, you know, the, the use of this to identify people involved in protests or that type of thing, I think that's more of the concern, right? It's like, it, it's not the names, it's the, the place and the location where you were, I think is the concern, right? Yeah.
But people, when they're typically protesting, are not in their car protesting, they are standing on the street protesting, not driving around in their cars.
No, but they went to, if they went to the protest in their car and then parked, and they go, I mean, I've been to protests where the police have taken photographs of the people who were there, so I think it's naive to say that there's no, you know, potential surveillance of the cars in the area. And I'm not, I'm not, you know, that, yeah.
Sorry, just, I don't mean to interrupt someone, but, so, so kind of, I guess where we are is, you know, the, the current state of the law, the laws it's written, is that it's, it's a one-year retention, but as I think was starting to be discussed, it's, it's really kind of a risk, you know, risk conversation, you know, if you, if you can lower the retention somewhat from a year, how, you know, how much risk does that present the city? I don't know. I'm not, I mean, not that I'm by any means an expert in it, but I'm not aware of any lawsuits. You could also make the, you know, reverse case, that maybe a civil liberties lawsuit would be the more likely lawsuit, which would be, if you hold it too long, probably, you know? But as it stands right now, we're at one year, and I don't know if, you know, something, you know, under a year would still work from a law enforcement perspective, something, you know, between a year and nothing would be, would work and still, you know, when you're trying to balance the relative data privacy issues versus kind of the state of the retention laws it is right now, if there's something that would work there.
Could we do something like we have done in other things, and collect data for a year, and see what is the timeframe that we go after? Is it 30 days? Is it 60 days? Is it six months? I, I don't feel like we, we know. I would feel really bad if we set it low and find out that we're in a situation where we could have solved a really horrendous crime here, and we were, you know, kind of jumped to something quickly without more data. And maybe, you know, maybe generally speaking, it's not very valuable to you after, you know, three months or six months, but without data, I really, I really don't know. I just know that investigations and things having to do with law enforcement seem to take a while to be done with. And so seven days would be, I mean, you might not even have had someone report something to you within seven days, and then you don't even have the opportunity, so that would be just, I think, not very prudent for us, so, just my thought.
Yeah.
So I, I appreciate all the research you did in the staff reports, try to figure out where we're at. And so I'm very reassured that this data is not pooled with all other enforcement agencies to create a really huge database that would be relatively easy for even a police officer somewhere to go and create an easy record of where this person has been for the last year. So I'm relieved about that, I'm relieved that, that even our database is only accessible by our police personnel. I certainly understand the, the concerns about assembling all this data and housing it somewhere, and I worry about that sort of potential, you know, I can certainly create scenarios where that data becoming public would harm somebody, you know? If somebody's out to check on a particular person, they know that person's license plate number, they don't need to match it against a DMV database. So, so I think there are scenarios where release of that information would clearly be harmful. I'm, I'm less worried about it, about our data being the source of that information when there are commercial databases out there, collected by private parties, running these probably very same cameras or very similar cameras on their own devices or their own whatever. So I'm, I'm a little less worried that our data is going to be the target of anybody when there's easier ways to get similar data, not quite as detailed as ours probably will be. I would rather set a shorter limit than, than one year. The, the statute, that, I, I think the statute is vague enough that, that we'd be okay setting a shorter limit. I, I wouldn't set, you know, as short as Vice Mayor Sparks, but, but I would be quite happy with three months or six months as a retention. And partly that's just a... And partly that's just a, I want to stop the accumulation of huge amounts of database on our, on our citizens, huge amounts of data on our citizens with no clear purpose. And so that's where I'm at.
So I just want to share that many years ago, I worked in child support investigations, and so my job's to find people. And back in the day, it was so easy to go into DMV, Franchise Tax Board, you know, all these different systems and find people, find the information. So, I mean, good thing I was a good person, but all it takes is somebody to just kind of take this information and can do bad things or, I'm not saying that that would happen, but it's just the security of people's information and their, and their privacy and, and I, like my colleague here, also would agree, under a year, maybe three or six months or something is something I would agree with, because it feels like a year is a lot of information. I think that if there was, if the reader did locate something, then you would always already have like a case or a charge or something happening where you would have to retain it. But any other information that's in the, in the, in the cloud, kind of being stored for in case something happens in nine months, in a year, you know, I feel like it's too long and to be out there. So I would also agree to a lesser timeframe than a year.
So, Mayor, we're talking about like experimenting, right? So I'll just do a what if, what if we started the TASER-Axon rollout, if approved? What if we did six months? And then, as counsel mentioned, down the road, I'll report out. And I may be telling you, hey, we're, you know, if we would have kept some information longer, we could have solved a significant crime. Or maybe I, I tell you different. But, I don't know, I think maybe counsel can consider six months.
Okay. And also, something Ben said triggered to me, you were talking about people know where you're at, at your house. I want to remind people that I constantly see the Google car driving around, and it's taking everybody's information wherever they're at and at their houses, too, all the time. And I always see those Google cars around. And that's, that's public information that anybody can go onto Google and get. Yes.
Just say that the Fourth Amendment protects people from unreasonable searches from the government, you know, not from Google. So we have a different standard of how we're going to behave.
That's fine, but I'm, just to say that you know where someone's at, that is out there all the time. Kay, did you?
Well, I mean, Google blurs out license plates, but, but also the, I guess the, I like your idea and your compromise, and I appreciate that, but my, I wonder, how would you know if you had had it for another month, you would have been able to solve it if it's, if it's deleted and you don't know what was there anymore, right? Like, how would you know that?
It could come out through an investigation. So say we had a license plate read that expired, and then later, I mean, there's so many ways to solve crimes, but we could realize that this person that we didn't know was in our city, we did a license plate read on them and expired, we didn't know who the suspect was, but then they fueled at our gas station. So, yeah, we could figure out things after the fact. We would know. Not always, but sometimes.
So does that make sense? What he's saying is the record was gone, that they were there, but they had receipts from a gas station.
No, I understand, but that doesn't mean that you would necessarily have photographed their license plate, right?
Only if they passed.
Because you would have had to driven past. That's what I'm saying, is like, how would you know?
Only if they drove past them.
Yeah, there's a lot, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I can count on one hand the number of times I passed a police car.
No, I mean, I'm just, I'm thinking that you could.
I'm just saying there are, yeah, there are scenarios.
Right. No, I'm just thinking, I think you could do the positive.
We would figure out that this person, this car was in our jurisdiction after the fact.
Right.
Whether we read the plate or not.
Right, but the point of, of having retained that, so my, I see the positive of it, right? Like, you can say, hey, because we had this, we were able to solve this crime. I think the opposite is more challenging to say, you know, because you won't know if it, if you had retained it, and if you had happened to drive by, if you have erased that data, there's no way to know if you did have it before because you have erased it. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I'll just add, too, that another thing that's just a metric, maybe doesn't directly answer that question, but another metric is, we talked about, you know, reporting back to the council on this, including search statistics, and so that might be helpful in sort of understanding how it's actually being used, in addition to the information the chief said.
Yeah, that's kind of a follow up question I had, because we've had the ALPR system through Vigilant for years. So, you know, I kind of wonder, you know, why do we need to try this for a year and see how it goes? When, you know, couldn't we look back at what we've done with the ALPR system in the years that we've had it and see how effective it's been?
Do we know? Do we know how it's impacted crime solving in Kattati?
Well, we've, we've recovered a lot of stolen automobiles, I know that. And then also, as I pointed out, we've had people that tried to report some things and it wasn't factual, so they've been beneficial, yeah.
Question about the stolen automobiles, is that because the officer got a hit on the hot list, or was it because of the retention of the record somehow?
It's because it's associated with the hot list, yeah.
So even if we didn't retain the records, we still get the benefit of being able to recover the stolen automobiles?
Yeah, I mean, I think if it's, if it's a, if it's this vehicle that's in the hot list, if it's currently in the hot list and the officer drives by, it'll flag it, yeah. Yeah. Not if it's, not if you captured it a week ago and then it becomes a flagged vehicle, you know?
Okay, so where are we at?
We already did public comment, right?
We did.
Okay.
Didn't we?
Sorry, I got lost.
I know, that was a long time ago, but yes, I thought we did.
Well, I'm, if there's not more discussion, I would make a motion and see where we land. But I'm happy if somebody else would rather. Should I go ahead?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. I move that we adopt a motion authorizing the city manager to execute a five-year agreement with Axon for deployment of dash cams, dash cameras in the police electric vehicles with the provision that the data retention for the automatic, for the ALPR system be set at six months.
I'll second that.
All right.
May I propose an amendment to the motion? Propose an amendment that we set the data retention at three months?
So do we have to have a second on that one? I forget how this goes.
Yeah, you need a second on it, or I guess the, the motion maker can accept the amendment and just put it into his motion, but.
I'm going to leave the motion alone.
Okay.
All right. I would just like to know from the chief what you feel the impact of three months versus six months would be on crime fighting?
It would give us three more months for something bad to happen elsewhere to track it back to Kattati so that we can match up a crime, like I described.
Okay, so we have a standing motion and second, and we did not get, okay, so let's do a roll call vote. I think that'll be the easiest.
Councilmember Rivers?
I'm sorry, I'm not fair on what I'm voting on.
The original motion was six months.
The amendment didn't get a second.
Oh, okay.
Aye.
Councilmember Lemus?
Aye.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sparks?
No.
Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
All right.
I think you're up.
Should we do something fun now? Let's do arts and crafts, all right? So.
Oh, no. We're going to draw our own seal, is that what you're suggesting?
Not suggesting that, no. Okay, so, just, just, I know everyone here is very familiar with the background, but I'll just reiterate some of the key points here. So many years ago, we started work on the seal, but then in conversations with the Federated Indians of Greatin Rancheria, they, they requested that we no longer continue forward with the fictional Chief Kattati in our, in our city seal. And so, given that feedback from our local tribe, we pivoted and then put out a community survey and just asked the community what they, you know, what they thought. So this happened back in August of 2022, and in the survey, the public largely supported a nature-based theme, with music being the second most popular theme. There was also significant public comment encouraging the city to incorporate the hexagon layout into the seal to make it unique to Kattati. In November of 2022, the council reviewed this and the feedback from the public and also conceptual seal options. And, and based on the, based on the feedback, they basically can, the council at that time largely confirmed the public feedback, which included the artist's design of the seal based on a nature theme as well as a hexagon shape and potentially, but also, I should say, potentially an element or texture that tie the seal, tie the seal to native history. And then the artist put together some options that were reviewed by the council in February of this year. And I won't go through it all, but there's, there's a bunch of feedback from the council summarized in the packet page on 213. Some of the more nuanced feedback, though, was that it would be nice to add a small, almost like an Easter egg, a rooster, on the leather vein on top of the fan stand. The council wanted to see it in, both in the large format, so you can see the detail, but also smaller formats, so that you could see what it would look like in its sort of native environment, which would be generally on a, like, city stationery or a business card. And, and the council also asked for black and white and also color versions, so they could see it both formats. And then finally, or actually two other things, one is to confirm that the native, that the texture or the outside border is actually something that ties back to something like a native basket weave, as was presented, but confirming that that was in fact the case. And then finally, looking at it with a hexagon with sharp edges versus the rounded edges that were in the concepts the council was looking at at that time. So on packet page 214, there is a picture of a Pomo basket, so that's, that was the sort of the inspiration for, for the border around the outside, as well as, there's also on the, on the walls at the corner of 116 and Old Red, there's, it's incorporated in that wall, too. So there's, it has been used previously in a public space after public input on that design. And so that's, that's just confirming that it is a Pomo Indian basket weave. I will just point out, though, that the coastal Miwok tribes also inhabited this area. I don't know if there's a coastal Miwok analog that's exactly the same, but both tribes did generally inhabit this area. And we did, we did try to, you know, change some things to make the Laguna, which is the river in the, in the center of the logo, look more like a river and less like a pathway, which is one of the, one of the things that we'd heard in the prior iteration of this. So the artist did include more rocks and reeds and other things to try to make it look more river-like, very placid, but still river-like. You're not going to whitewater raft down it, but it, that's appropriate for the Laguna, it's a pretty low-grade, you know, river or creek up at the, up at the upper end. So in terms of some of the foliage comments, it was hard for, when we looked at different versions with more foliage, it just sort of obscured the main focal points, which were the Laguna and the bandstand in the back. And, and even though there's various versions, I guess the best, you know, sort of small-scale version you can see is on packet page 215, you can see it in color and also in black and white, in the, in that art style that was proposed. So I think that covers all the main points. With that, I just will say that from the staff, at least, we recommend the round corner and the Pomo basket weave pattern on the outside. And we think it's a more aesthetically pleasing and also in terms of the basket weave respective of the native culture. And also definitely invokes a native pattern, even at first glance, even if you're not familiar with how we came up with it. So, and respects, and lastly respects the prior feedback received from the tribe to remove the likeness of the fictional Chief Kattati from our logo. And with that, I'll just end it there, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can.
So Damian, did staff make a comment on rooster versus no rooster? Because I noticed some have it and some don't.
Oh, the, so the final versions are on, yeah, some of the earlier versions that were included just for reference, don't have it yet.
All right.
But the later versions in the packet, and they don't have, mine at least don't have page numbers, but starting on page 221, that attachment set. Yes, 215 has the, small scale, but same, same graphic, just very small. So you wouldn't be able to see it, right? You wouldn't be able to see the rooster on that level, which is hence the Easter egg concept. You'd see it up there, but you wouldn't see it on the business card.
Well, yeah. Okay, questions?
Yes? Just one question, did you, did you have any comments from the tribe about the border pattern? Did they give you any feedback?
I, so I did reach out to them and we, I showed it to them and we discussed it. They were just, they were non-committal, they didn't really have an opinion one way or the other. They said if we really wanted to get an opinion on the border pattern through the tribal council, we'd have to formally submit it. And, I mean, it's a very low priority, so we probably wouldn't hear back for a very long time, if ever. I mean, because they're more focused on projects. But they didn't, they weren't opposed to it, but they also didn't support it, they were just neutral on it.
Okay. I just wanted to make a couple comments about the just description from Marie McNaughton had emailed the staff about Kattati, the village that our town is named after, the, that the accent marks should go over the A, not between the T and the I, so I'm just going to say that. And then also that the pattern that we have is actually not Coast Miwok, it is Pomo. And this territory, the village of Kattati, is Coast Miwok, not Pomo. There was definitely some crossover, and the basket patterns are, you know, relatively similar, like the Coast Miwok look more like Vs, kind of, and the Pomo looks more like triangles. But I think it's fine, I just wanted to have mentioned that. And then the other thing is, you did mention, you know, Chief Kattati is fictional, but the, my understanding, or her understanding was, when it was originally created, it wasn't meant to be a particular person, it was meant to be, to symbolize a group of people who were here. And then the Chief Kattati idea came up somewhere later. But I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Sylvia? Ben? No? Okay, we will open this up for public comment, there is no one here in the audience. Would you check with our Zoom attendees?
Thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Thank you. Ben, I guess you're up.
Sure. I'll just say, I love where we landed. I, I think the staff, I agree with the staff recommendation of that, that try and get our basket weave border. of that, that try and get our basket weave border and the versions that are on 221 in the backside, I think will be a huge improvement over our current seal.
Sylvia?
I also agree. I like the one with a Pomo basket weave border. And I'm wondering if our business cards can be reprinted with that on it? Mine is blank.
Yeah, there's going to be business cards and stationary orders after this, if the council approves it.
That means we have collector's items.
I have one, one more. Oh, I just forgot what I was going to say.
I don't know. I can't help you. My mind-reading skills aren't working. Well, Laura, did you have any?
Maybe it'll come back to me when Laura's done.
Yeah.
Sure. Just one comment. I showed this around to people in the really small format and asked them what they thought. And some of the feedback I got was that, on the color one in particular, it's hard at a glance to see the bandstand, the dark green. And even on the black and white one, the amount of crosshatching lines, it, just at a glance, you don't really notice what that is. So I'm wondering if there's a way to, without completely reinventing the hexagon here, is there a way to, I don't know, maybe lighten up the color of the grass or enlarge the bandstand a little bit? So when it's in that real small format, you can see what it is at a glance? No, that's possible?
I mean, lightening the grass would be easy. The bandstand, I don't know, because you'd be changing proportions of things, so I'm not sure. It would still have the same look. But the grass would be easy to change the color of if we want to lighten it a little bit.
Because you're right, in the black and white one, that, that contrast.
Yeah, it pops out more.
It pops out a little bit more, yeah. Agree. Less green grass. A lighter green grass. Dryer grass, that's it.
I mean, I agree with that, and I don't really want to see it back at another meeting. So I'm wondering if, if we can approve it, subject to, to the artist's discretion, to increase the contrast between the grass and the bandstand.
And I think the good example is how it does pop out in the black and white one. So whatever contrasts. I think I get the gist. Did you remember?
I remember.
Okay.
It was just, so I have read some comments or had some feedback also about how there was not a choice to keep the original seal or the former seal. And I just want to clarify that that was because when we, we did, when the city consulted with Great and Rancheria, the, they asked us to not use it. And so, to honor their request, it was not a choice. That's why it wasn't a choice. So I just want to be clear about that, because I've seen some comments about how they weren't given that choice, and that's the reason why. It's to honor the native people who live here.
That is correct.
That is, yeah, that's correct.
All right, then I'd be looking for a motion. Somebody, anybody.
I'll make a motion that we move forward with that image that has the Pomo basket weave around with the, the change to lightening the grass around the...
Bandstand.
Bandstand.
I second that motion.
And sorry, before you guys vote, just to, just to be totally clear, just to increase the contrast specifically between the bandstand and the field around it.
Yes. Yes. All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, we have a new seal. Good job, everybody. Yay. And I guess people will get seals on their cards. Okay. Oh, there you go, new name tags, too. Okay, see, now you have a collector's item. There you go. So I guess we can move on to the city manager's report.
Yes. Well, one of the things we'll be doing is replacing stationary and name badges. So I can lead with that. Other things that are exciting, it's been getting a lot of positive feedback on, well, just from the community. And as a surrogate of that, the social media that we have is kind of blowing up around Kattati Park. Everyone's very excited to see everything that's going on there. I mean, I'm excited to see it, too. There's the, the five-to-12-year-old play structure is built. It's not usable yet, but it's built, so you can go out there and see it. The gazebo is constructed. So that's basically, the actual structure itself is ready now. The swings are in and built. And so the next thing they're working on now, the rest of this week, is they're going to be working on the two-to-five-year-old play structure and also the adult fitness equipment area. So those are still to be installed, but that's going to be later this week. And then landscaping, and we're looking at, by the end of, end of May, early June, it's going to be done, except for the bathroom. So the bathroom is prefabricated, as I think you guys know. So that's supposed to come in at the end of June, early July. And then they're literally just going to crane it in, drop it in, you know, and hook it up, and it'll be done. And then, and then we have to have a ribbon cutting, so. Get your scissors out. It'll be fun. All right, so other projects, as you know, just out here on the street, we have La Plaza, West Sierra Road Construction. That's really going to get going. Right now, they're doing curb ramps and other preliminary work, but they're going to get going with the paving work. End of May, I believe, is when they're slated to start. And that's also true of the other street reconstruction project, which is out on Myrtle. So they're doing other preliminary work, pathways, road, you know, curb ramps, things like that. They are using two different construction methods. So this one here is like dig and, dig and patch and re-overlay, whereas the one out on Myrtle is complete, dig-out. So it's going to be dirt roads there for a bit, until they repave and rebuild the whole roads. But that's a recycling method that you think you're all familiar with. We've done it in other places in the city. All right, and one of, actually, one thing out there on, and this information will be going out shortly, but just to be aware of it, when they start working on the Myrtle project and the pathways, they're going to have to close the park during work hours. So eight to five on weekdays. So there'll be temporarily, at least the access, people won't be able to access it through the, off of Myrtle during that time.
Can they walk in?
I think the answer is probably no. They're not supposed to, because it'd be walking through a construction zone.
Okay.
Eventually, when we do the park improvements there, there'll be another way in through the back, across a bridge from the pathway, but that's not obviously built yet. So at this point, the only access, only legitimate access point is off of Myrtle. The only real access point. Yeah, there's kind of like, you know...
Walk through the creek.
Yeah, if you have your, you know, if you have your, yeah, your boots on, you can get, there are other ways, but, yeah. So City Hall repainting, that's supposed to get going mid-June. So that's going to, City Hall, Community Center, Civic Center, that's all going here very soon. And then Pocket Park is done, except for the ballard lights, and that's probably going to take some time to get all that sorted out until, until we do that, and then we'll turn the lights on. We'll just talk about other things we've already talked about, just to save you guys the time. But we will be coming back with the all-electric reach code in the near future, so probably in the next month or two. Planning Commission and Council will be talking about that again. This past Saturday, we held our annual Kattati Community Yard Sale in the Kattati Room, which was a great success. We had over 200 visitors throughout the day and were able to sell a lot of secondhand items to the community at a low cost, which benefits our recreation programs. And the unsold items were donated to the Redwood Gospel Mission to sell in their thrift store to benefit the homeless support programs through Sonoma County. So that's what happens with the stuff that's not sold at ours. We had the first community campout at the Veranda Floody Ranch. We had 10 people there, and they stayed the night. And they had lots of campfires, well, they had a campfire and all the camp activities. It was a good first year. It started small, but we're hoping that, you know, in the second year, it gets much, much bigger. But like a lot of things we're doing out there for the first time, we're just trying them and seeing how they work. And if we think that they went well, then we'll continue to do them or modify. And it's a continual, ongoing thing that we're doing out there with a lot of different types of programming. Another one is rainwater capture. That workshop was originally supposed to be, I think it was last weekend, but it got, because of rain, got rescheduled to Saturday, May 27th. It's ironic that the rainwater capture workshop gets rescheduled because of rain, but...
What's wrong with this picture?
Yeah. Yeah, there's materials that they have to have that they can't, I guess, get rained on. So, May 27th, 10 to noon. It's, it'll be rescheduled to that date. We also have our last spring youth, it's a free youth day at the ranch from three to five, 3:30 to five. And that's Mother's Day-themed, and there's music, games, crafts, and all sorts of, there's a take-home gift for Mother's Day as well. Walk-ins are welcome, but RSVs, RSVPs are, RSVPs are preferred. We talked about this earlier in the meeting, but 7:30 to 10:30, May 18th, the city is going to be staffing a sort of SAG station for the bike tour every day in La Plaza Park. So that's coming up here pretty soon. And then May 19th, we have our Kids Night Out from 5:00 to 9:00 at the Community Center for children ages 5 to 12. And that's to take care of the kids while the parents go do whatever they want for a couple hours. And then we have lots of other stuff that I won't get into now because they're far enough out that we can talk about it at the next meeting. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Thank you. Then we will move on to city council member parts. Do you want to go first?
Mine's quick. The Kattati Historical Society barbecue was super fun, and we all got to serve chicken to the citizens of Kattati, which was really great. We got to meet a bunch of people and the service auction. And I have heard through the planning committee that it was a very big success financially as well. And am looking forward to working with the person who bid on my genealogy research and helping them break through whatever brick walls they have.
Okay, Laura?
I attended the Water Advisory Committee and Technical Advisory Committee meeting on Monday, May 1st. Two real quick things and then one longer thing. First, the Saving Water Partnership is focusing their messaging on thank you. Thank you for saving water. Trying to acknowledge that people really did reduce their use quite a bit. So I know we're, we're kind of echoing that in our messaging, too, with our water bill. And then also, the, this is a little sad, that the salmon steelhead, the fish counts are really, really low this year, which was surprising to me. We've had so much rain. I thought that would help, but they're very, very low.
Maybe they didn't like it, huh?
Yeah, no. So then, a little bit longer thing. The, there's a new group forming called the Russian River Water Forum. And it is going to be tasked with figuring out what to do about Potter Valley Project. Who ought to control it? Who wants to invest in it? How that's going to work to benefit the region? So Mike Thompson came and spoke, he's been coming to meetings, but he spoke about it at this recent meeting. There's going to be two, a couple moving parts in this. There's going to be a planning group that has 26 members that's all really clearly defined, who's involved with it. It's various county folks and tribes and water contractors. So for city government types, there's six seats reserved for water suppliers. So three of those are from the WAC-TAC. So just so you know, the representatives on that planning group are going to be Windsor, Santa Rosa, and North Marin Water, Petaluma, and Renner Parker Alternates. The planning group is a technical-level group that's going to come up with recommendations, and then that will funnel into the leadership group. The leadership group will be more open to any elected representatives, but their recommendation was that each elected city council, you know, elected bodies would send one, one representative. So that's just something that will be, will be coming up soon. That group is going to start meeting, the, the planning group, the technical group is, is meeting like in a week, like next week, having their first meeting. And then the leadership group is not going to start meeting until late summer, early fall. So we can send somebody to that. It could be me, since I'm on the WAC-TAC. It could be somebody else, I presume. So we'll have to, I guess, decide who, if we want to send somebody. That's it. That's my report.
Thank you. Ben?
So from Sonoma Clean Power's board meeting last month, I'll just, last week, I'll just report that the governor included in his budget trailer bill this year some provisions that would really cut off CCAs like Sonoma Clean Power at the knees and leave, leave their only power to be setting rates. So removing their ability to purchase power. Thus removing Sonoma Clean Power's ability to try to provide clean power, for instance. They would remove all power purchasing ability from, from CCAs. So there's a lot, a lot going on right now to try to, because the budget trailer bill, this doesn't belong in the budget bill, but that's the way, that's where you put things that you don't want to have a full hearing and you try to sneak them through. So a lot of efforts being made to make sure those, those provisions get a full hearing and aren't snuck through on a budget trailer bill. So that's the big news at Sonoma Clean Power. And the Russian River Watershed Association has, I think it's 20th anniversary coming up on June 1st. Big, so big celebration at the Laguna Foundation.
All right. Sylvia?
Okay, so, yeah, I also attended the, the Sonoma Clean Power Board Meeting on Zoom. You know, so there was a really good legislative update. It also included AB 205, which is a fixed delivery cost by PG&E by 2025, which I think some cities are appealing it to the ombudsman because it's a fixed cost that's going to affect investments and other kind of things. So, right, it's one of the things they brought up. So it was a really good legislative update at the meeting. And that was last week. I also, last Thursday, went to the Generation Housing Summit, and I saw some staff. It was great to see some of the staff there. They had some presenters, including from San Diego Urban Infill, where they had some really kind of out-of-the-box kind of ideas for housing solutions. So that was, that was a really good presentation last Thursday. Today, I went to the Kattati Chamber of Commerce. And the few things that are coming up, they have the Kattati Music Festival, June 24th, from 12 to 6 p.m., and they will be looking for volunteers. And so I may be volunteering, maybe asking who else is available on June 24th. They also have a couple of other projects that are coming down the Pike. They have a Kattati Art Project, where they want to do Kattati art downtown together. I think they're working with Art Start and maybe do some like native, native flowers, maybe chickens. They're kind of working with them to find out what kind of art to have down there. And also, Kattati will be the first of a project with, this is with Sonoma County Tourism Board. It's called Neighborhood Project, where they're going to do like a video series on Kattati. So it'll be like the first ones in the county to kind of kick off that project. So that's exciting. So I think that's what I have for right now. Okay. Oh, RCU Rodeo Credit Union, next Saturday, has their Shred-a-thon. I look forward to it every year. So if you have stuff to shred.
Good information. Yeah, the Kattati Historical Barbecue was great. It was so nice to see people again, you know, people that, that you don't get to see very often. And it was nice seeing the community members that we really haven't seen in, in a few years. So it was great to catch up and serve. So that was great. I attended the LACCO meeting, and the important thing out of that is we are doing a RFP to work on the disadvantaged, unincorporated communities, or AKA DUCs. And that is important for annexation of all of these areas that are disadvantaged. And in particular, in the Sonoma Valley and Santa Rosa, there's, it's like Swiss cheese, where these, there's all these areas that were never annexed. So this study will be really important for that. So, so looking forward to that. I also attended SET-RCPA yesterday. The big thing was the budget, so they were working on that. And the other thing is, is they are working on polling for a, our CPA for some kind of measure, be it a sales tax measure or a property tax measure. They looked at some other things like TOT and an airport fee and things like that. But as everything got thrown out and looked at, really, the only things available to them are property and sales tax. So they're going to be doing some polling. So that, in case you hear about that, they'll be doing that soon. And the most important, or the most sad thing that came out of that meeting is that Suzanne announced that she's going to retire. So she has not picked a date yet, but sometime between October and the end of the year. Then Suzanne, who's been there like forever since the beginning of time, will be retiring. So that was kind of sad news, but good for her, so.
I forgot one thing. I forgot one thing. Can I add one thing?
Yeah, absolutely.
From Sonoma Clean Power, I should have pointed out, it's not a change, but I should still point it out. We just approved the coming fiscal year's budget, which includes maintaining rates at 5% below PG&E's rates for the first half of the year with an anticipated reduction for the second half of the year, because Sonoma Clean Power has just about reached its target reserve goal. So it will be able to stop putting as much money into reserves and start reducing rates even further below PG&E's rates.
Great. Anything else? All right, then. I would say that, is there any information received after... Oh, I'm sorry. We have public comment on non-action agenda items. I don't know why I keep skipping over that one. And no one is here, but would you check with our Zoom attendees?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Harvey. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon at this time. Mayor Harvey, that'll end public comment.
Okay. And I will, I see someone in the hallway, if they would like to speak on any public comment on non-action agenda items. You can, no? Okay, all right. I got that signal. Then we will move on to information received after the agenda was posted.
Yes, there were four public comments received since the agenda was posted. Those were published to the web agenda, and they are also available here in print in the chamber.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So with that, I believe we were on to adjournment at 9:28. Thank you, everyone.